Thank you. All right, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Great, see, we'll call the June 16, 2025 School Committee meeting to order at 15:00 p.m. And we'll begin with public comment. See, anyone in person would like to make a public comment can come to the microphone. Yeah, anyone who would like to make public comment, please raise your hand virtually. Seeing none, seeing no one in person. Okay. All right, we will move forward with our first presentation here with our Situate High School Assistant Principal Lisa Kirk, presentation on SHS Peer Mentor Program.
Testing.
Yeah, you guys can take it right off the stand.
All right, my name is Parker Shaw. I'm an upcoming senior at Situate High School. I participated in the mentorship program for, I participated last year and then I'm participating in it this year. Last year, we had seventeen students participating in the mentorship program. This year, that number has grown significantly to thirty-eight.
Hi, I'm Kira Scheider, and I have also been in the mentorship program since it started. Our goals are to bridge the gap between upper and lower classmen and really make people feel at home in this school and work to achieve an inclusive school environment. And we also want to serve as a resource for freshmen who need it, giving our friendship, guidance, trust, and our advice. And we also want to assist freshmen in having a smooth transition from middle school to high school.
I'm Phil Carr, I'm also a rising senior. Well, as a mentor program needed, it's for upper classmen and freshmen. Freshier is very difficult for kids because they come from middle school and they're going to high school where they don't have as much like help and they need it and it gives them a classmate and also a role model to follow in the school by being by example.
Do you have any questions? Anyone have any questions about? Okay.
I mean, I don't, at some point, I'd love to know more about just kind of like the structure of what you do. Like how, like how do kids get involved and how often do you meet and things like that? So I guess maybe just like a smidge more detail I'd love to know. But if you don't want to go into all that right now, maybe we can add that to the agenda next year.
Sure, and I can provide some information.
That'd be great.
Um, to the school board that you guys and then can put questions back.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, it was my first time hearing about it, so thank you guys for coming. Thank you.
So much. All right, up next, we have our honoring of our twenty-four, twenty-five SPS retirees. Are we starting with Principal Beatty?
Sure. So I'm honored to be here tonight. There are four amazing educators retiring from Wampatuck, and I'd like to say a few words about each one of them. So first, we have Deb Edgren. Deb has worked for the Situate Public Schools for nineteen years as a school psychologist. She has been a pillar of the Wampatuck community, supporting staff and students alike. She's not only a trusted advisor in working with students and parents, but has also been an exceptional school psychologist. Deb has conducted countless initial and reevaluation assessments with dedication and expertise. Over the years, she has skillfully and compassionately communicated results to hundreds of families and caregivers, helping them to understand their child's learning profile. With a steady and reassuring presence, she has guided families through challenging moments, always reinforcing that they are not alone and that we are here to support their child every step of the way. Deb's deep commitment to collaboration is evident in the many hours she has spent working closely with staff, consistently placing the needs of students at the center of every decision she makes. Her professionalism, empathy, and unwavering advocacy has made a lasting impact on the school community. Deb's most precious gift is her ability to connect with children and families. For the past nineteen years, she has dedicated herself to building a positive, lasting relationships, a commitment that shines through each time the seniors return to Wampatuck. Deb always welcomes them back with a genuine excitement and often recalls a special memory or story about each one of them. Her true love for this community and her dedication to all of us will be greatly missed. If we need her, though, we need only to find the closest live band event and listen for the tambourine. Congratulations, Deb. There it is.
Congratulations.
The next one is Lynn Flannery. Lynn has worked for the Situate Public Schools for sixteen years. Lynn has been the epitome of professionalism, compassion, and quiet strength. Over her sixteen years with the Situate Public Schools, she has inspired a love of reading and writing in hundreds of children and supported countless colleagues with generosity and grace. She's been the go-to source for the latest in children's literature, always one step ahead with the newest titles and an honest, thoughtful review. Her passion for books is matched by her incredible work ethic and deep reliability. In the classroom, Lynn has helped create an environment where all students feel encouraged to see themselves as scholars. She has high expectations and consistently goes above and beyond in her role as a literacy specialist. Whether supporting instruction, designing curriculum, or offering thoughtful guidance, Lynn gave her all, always with humility and heart. Lynn is the kind of colleague you would turn to for anything, from trusted professional advice to a quick proofread of a parent email. So many of the things she did went unnoticed simply because that's who Lynn is. Quietly dependable, endlessly generous, and always thinking of others. From recommending just the right book to a reluctant reader, to cooking meals for a sick teammate, to handling every last makeup screener, even math, she did it all with care and kindness. Lynn's passion for literacy and unwavering commitment to the Wampatuck community have left a lasting legacy. Congratulations, Lynn. Michelle Daniels. Michelle has worked for the Situate Public Schools for twenty-one years. She has had an extraordinary career as an occupational therapist. Her deep knowledge and expertise are evident in everything she does, and we have appreciated her insights and professionalism every day. She is a thorough and thoughtful with each evaluation she writes, often sacrificing her own time to ensure every detail is just right. It's not uncommon for Michelle to be the last one to leave the ECC or to be working on reports from home late into the evening. And yet, no matter how much is on her plate, Michelle always takes time, time to answer questions, time to offer support, time to contribute meaningfully to conservations about students. Her presence has grounded our team. She's been the calm, steady voice of reason, and when Michelle begins with, "Can I just say something?" Or, "Let's talk about that," everyone knows to learn, lean in and listen. Her clarity, compassion, insight to every discussion will be missed. Michelle is more than an incredible educator. She's a true friend, a trusted colleague, and as we often say, the best of us. We will miss her even more than words can express, but we are so grateful for the time we've had with her, and we wish her all the joy and relaxation she so richly deserves in retirement. Congratulations, Michelle. Peggy Duggan. Peggy has dedicated thirty-eight years to the Situate Public Schools, and her contributions have left an indelible mark on our community. Her historical knowledge of Situate's families and the inner workings of the town is truly unmatched. Peggy knows everyone, everyone. And for everyone she knows, she always has a funny story, a fond memory, or even a few kind words to share. Even the student who just spoke, peer mentor, she leaned over to me and said, "He went to Wampatuck." And I'm sure I'll hear a story tomorrow about him. Peggy has been the heart of Wampatuck for many years, ensuring the school runs smoothly every day. She knows every corner of the building, and she always is ready to lend a helping hand with warmth and grace. But Peggy's greatest gift is the love and care she shows for children. She treats every child as if they were her own, greeting them every morning with a bright smile and making sure they feel seen, heard, and valued. Her presence in the office has made Wampatuck feel more like a home, a place filled with compassion, joy, and a genuine sense of welcome. Peggy? You're gonna cry. Thank you for all the years, all the love, all the laughter. You have made a difference in more lives than you ever have. And those are our four retirees. Thank you.
And so, Beatty. Gates retirees.
So unfortunately, four of our retirees could not make it tonight, but I'm sure they're watching. So we will share all of our wonderful memories. First, we'd like to honor Louise Fitzgerald, who has dedicated twenty-seven years as our beloved cafeteria manager. Louise, or Mama Lou, as she is known by the kids, is known for her loud, funny personality and her ability to run a tight ship in the cafeteria. The kids absolutely adore her because she treats each one with kindness and respect. Her unwavering commitment to nourishing not only the bodies but also the spirits of our students has made unwavering, I'm sorry, a lasting impact on our school community. Louise's warmth, her humor, and her dedication have been the cornerstone of our daily school life. We are deeply grateful for all that she has done to make our school a better place. So congratulations to Louise. Next, we proudly recognize Mary Ellen Gaziano, who is a dedicated eighteen-year veteran of our school community. Mary Ellen has worn many hats, a math specialist, a math teacher, a mentor to new teachers, the math coach, the peer leaders, and academic advisory coordinator, and so much more. Her commitment to excellence is evident in the high standards she holds for her students, and her passion shines when she can be found nearly every day after school working one-on-one with students to help sharpen their skills. Mary Ellen's leadership, her dedication, and her unwavering support have profoundly shaped both students and colleagues alike. We are truly grateful for her many years of service and the positive impact she continues to make on our school. Next, we have Maureen Keys. Maureen Keys, we celebrate her, a remarkable nineteen-year veteran instructional paraprofessional whose dedication has supported hundreds of students in reaching high academic standards. A true math whiz, Mrs. Keys has an incredible talent for breaking down even the most challenging concepts into manageable, understandable pieces. Students are drawn to her not only for her expertise, but because she boosts their confidence and helps them believe in themselves. Beyond her work with students, Mrs. Keys has been a mentor and a confidant to many new paraprofessionals, and special education teachers often call her a godsend. Her generosity extends beyond the walls of the classroom. She supports student projects. She helps with our gardening and landscaping at Gates, and she even collaborated with her husband to build birdhouses for our birding club. We are so grateful for her passion, her kindness, and her commitment to our school community. So congrats to Maureen. And finally, we honor Dory Reed, who has devoted eighteen years to the students of Situate and over thirty years to the teaching profession. Her passion for science, engaging instructional methods, and deep belief that every student is worthy and capable of success has made her an invaluable member of our team. She cares deeply about her students and her generously served as a mentor to both new and seasoned teachers alike. She's played a key role in the planning of our school's bernal pool and has consistently prioritized experiential learning, inspiring students to become thoughtful stewards of the earth. Her compassion, her dedication, and her unwavering commitment will be greatly missed by all who have had the privilege of working with Dory. So congratulations to Dory.
Thank you, Principal Beatty and Dr. Rab for.
Thank you so much. Tonight, I have the pleasure of honoring Erica Brady, our lead bus driver, transportation coordinator, who's worked in the district for over twenty years, beginning as a driver and retiring as lead bus driver and coordinator. When I began in Situate two years ago, Erica was one of the first people that I had met. I had a request to see if a school bus could fit down a particular street in Situate. And me being me, I went on Google Maps and Google Earth, and I had my protractor and my compass out, and I was trying to figure it all out. And Erica came into my office, and I was showing her all my pretty research, and she took the keys out of her purse and said, "Let's go find out." So it was awesome. So we took the first of what became many field trips to see what we could do. And we checked out the conditions, and in that particular instance, we learned that a bus really couldn't fit down that street. But due to Erica's expert driving skills, we managed to quietly and quickly back away before the neighbors had a good laugh. Later in the fall, I learned about high tide bus stops, a very uniquely Situate thing. This can happen, and one morning, when a storm was predicted, Erica let me know we had to call it and let everyone know they'd have to swim to their bus stops if we could pick them up, you know, after they got there. And I took it in stride. I figured, you know, getting into Situate now, I get it, floodwater, you guys have a real kind of thing with floodwater. So she said, I said, "But how do you know it's gonna be a high tide sixteen hours beforehand?" And she told me she had been rowing in the river and she could feel it, and she knew it. So I took her for her word. Later, though, I did find out there's an app that predicts the tides. However, in any case, I was awed by her talent at least for that one. Erica is a very hands-on coordinator. During the winter, she takes a ride early every morning to be sure all the routes are clear of any debris and ready for pickup. And despite some pickups this spring, no one will ever know the hundreds of runs that were saved due to her quick thinking, crafty scheduling, and overall can-do attitude. It has been a pleasure working with Erica during the final two years of her twenty-year career here in Situate, and she goes on to spend some well-deserved time with her family. However, please know that whenever you're in town, we'll be calling you to sub. Bus drivers never really retire in Situate, and so when you're here, you'll be coming back. Congratulations, Erica.
Thank you, Dr. Rab, and congratulations to all the retirees. Well-earned, well-deserved, and thank you so much for all of your dedication and hard work to our children over these years. We are grateful and thankful for all that you've done and appreciate you so much. Thank you. Enjoy your summer and beyond. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
All right, moving on here, so new business. Mr. Barnes. Come on up. We have HBCU trip here. We're going to Washington DC potentially. Tell us all about it.
How you doing? Y'all can hear me, right?
Yeah.
All right, cool. It's back, that's okay. I was gonna say congratulations again to all the retirees.
They went on retiring.
No, really inspiring to see that as I'm super far away. Very inspiring to see that the day will come for you one day. Yeah, so today I'll be just presenting on proposed HBCU tour trip for February break of 2026. I'm a little ways out. We have the president.
The committee has it.
Yep, we have it in our backup. Can we project it though?
Sure.
Well, please, would you like me to pull it up?
Oh, you can.
Yeah, yeah, unless you have it already. I'll race you. You're on competition.
No, you can.
Sorry. I mean, maybe you can do it. You can do it, right? Or maybe just hold it like.
All right, here we go. My bad about that, guys. All right, so the, this is something that has been in my goals and plans since I very first started in Situate about three and a half, four years, four school years ago. Now coming up to the end of my first year as Metco Director, I'm having the opportunity to present this. It's such an honor. So going into this, this is a trip that I've reached out to other Metco districts prior to putting this together to see what have you guys done as far as HBCU tours? What companies have you guys doing? What are the reviews? How, how do things go? What wasn't great? I'm kind of getting a general gist of feedback and kind of some of the companies that the other schools have operated with. So what I've come back with is that over the course of five days, the tour has presented to, toured nine universities, five historical sites across four different states. The key information relative to the trip that I think is critical information for everyone to be aware of. First is the organization that we're going on the tour with is College Campus Tours. This is a, this is a company that has done three HBCU trips across the state in the past three years. Lincoln, Lincoln Sudbury, Belmont, and Bedford Public Schools used this company to do their trips, but they actually took trips deeper into the South to Alabama and then also to Georgia. This one, again, is to the DC area. The dates for this trip are February sixteenth to the twentieth, so it's the Monday of February break going into that Friday. Students will be leaving from here at Situate and then returning back here to the high school. This trip will be open to tenth and eleventh graders with select seniors possible because typically during this, during this time of their senior year, students have already decided where they're gonna be going or kind of at least have an idea of what they're gonna be doing postgraduate. So if that happens to be a case where students, senior students are presenting interest and they haven't yet decided where they're going, or this trip kind of makes sense for them, then we will open that up to them as that makes sense on a case-by-case basis. This trip is slated for thirty students, ten through, ten through eleven, and then six chaperones. The, the trip is, it's not, we're not flying. It's all motor coach transportation, so the kids will board a coach bus here and then make their way down towards DC. Each night, there's hotels, each night of the tour, there is nightly security provided by the, by the organization. And they also provide with a tour guide and director. So the chaperones on the trip, their goal, main purpose is to chaperone. They don't have to be leading tours and walking us through schools. That is all taken care of by the organization that we're working with there. Aside from just the, the tour and the historical sites, the company will also be providing educational seminars for the students throughout the week. So at each school they attend, they will actually receive a seminar based, receive a seminar relative to their college experience. There's one about like college one-on-one, there's one about like financial aid and intramural sports in schools. And there's, I believe there's seven different ones that the students will experience throughout their time. So not only will they be able to get onto these college campuses, but also be able to go into classrooms and actually sit for a lesson or a seminar in that. They will have lunch on, on all of these campuses. And then moving on to the next page, breaking down the objective of our tour. So the objective of the tour is pretty centrally to just really expose and educate students to the experience of what HBCUs are, college campuses in general, and the unique academic and cultural perspective that these campuses have, and really to broaden, to broaden the perspective of our students, not only of like what their options are, but also kind of enhancing their knowledge and education on the educational journey. The three goals of the trip is to increase college awareness and access opportunities for students, provide students with exposure and experience on in-session HBCU campuses, and also to educate students on the cultural and historical aspects of HBCUs and their significance. The schools on this tour, they, there's nine schools in total, six of them are HBCUs. For those who may not know what HBCU is, it stands for Historical Black College University. And then three schools on here are not HBCUs, but will still be a part of the tour. So the first is Howard University, George Washington University, Bowie State University, Delaware State, Chaney University, Lincoln University, Morgan State, the University of Maryland, and then the University of District of Columbia. So the first stop coming out of Massachusetts will actually start in Pennsylvania. So Chaney University, Lincoln University will be our first stops. And then moving down into Maryland, I believe DC is actually on the third day. And then coming back out, we'll work our way back up. And then the University of Delaware will be our last stop coming back towards Boston. So the student selection process, so once we kind of get back in the early stages of fall, we'll be hosting an information night in the fall regarding the college tour, just to present it to students and families. And then students from there will then complete the application of interest via Google Form, which pretty much is ask them generally some of their interests relative to college. Have they looked at college before? Have they heard of any of these schools? Are they looking at any of them? And those don't, those won't decide if they are able to attend or not. It's really just to gauge where students are and their, and their thought processes about college. Because also being able to provide additional support for them, maybe on the tour with guidance or kind of being able to answer some additional questions. But the first step in the process will be students submitting an application of interest. And then from there, pretty much with, with guidance and high school administration, we'll go through a selection process where they'll be, because they'll be selected in collaboration with myself, well, Metco team, administration, and guidance, based on a demonstrated interest in college and then really standing on their behavioral disciplinary standing. The goal is that nothing stands in the way of students being able to attend this trip. But those two things on the bottom will be the two pieces that we really look at when making the selection of the students that are attending the trip. The next piece of funding and budget overview. So the biggest thorn about the trip is the cost. So the total cost of the trip is sixty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. This covers thirty students, six chaperones, everything included, except for dinners. So with that, I see the transportation, lodging, intra-fuse, and meals, all meals aside from the dinner piece. So with this, the goal is to do corporate sponsorship over the summer and early fall so that there's really ideally no monetary barrier for families or students to attend this trip. So looking in the fall to seek out sponsorship from community organizations like Community Christmas, Shore, the High School PTO, St. Luke's Parish, and then also some other organizations local as well. And then connecting with students about potential fundraising options as we look to kind of go into the early stages of the fall. Additional funding sources, looking to allocate approximately ten thousand dollars from the Metco Grant 317, and then additionally doing program-wide fundraisers in the fall. That hopefully that this price that you see at the top is a number that was able to be paid in full from sponsorships and fundraisers so that students do not have to essentially pay money out of pocket going on to this trip. Post-tour follow-up, I think it's critical for students to bring back what they've learned, not only to their peers but also to the educators in the district. So following the tour, I would like to have student reflections or presentations to their school or to school committee. Implementing surveys to evaluate the impact of the students, so how they appreciate the trip, what they learned, what they took away, what they maybe learned they didn't know prior, but really kind of gauging what students took away from the trip. And then the bottom piece is ongoing mentorship or college planning sessions for participants in collaboration with guidance. So the goal for the chaperoning on the trip is to be members of the Metco team, the, at least two guidance counselors. the um at least um two guidance counselors so they can assist students while like actively in the ti- in the time of the tour and then also being able to bring information back to other guidance counselors. Um, and then also to have um at least one high school administrator on the trip. So again, I think this is not only critically important for our students, but also for our educators to not only um expand our knowledge, but be able to best support students with that may be looking at some of these options in the future. And does anyone have any questions?
We can hear you.
We can hear, okay. Well, I first wanted to say that I was so excited to see this in the packet, I think this is an amazing opportunity for our students. So I thank you for really working hard on this. Um, my question is really for Tom. Um, I know in the budget, we had set aside money for our families who struggle to, you know, pay for, so is this trip also qualify for that, if, if there happens to be a cost for the family, they could come to the school and request funds to support them if they get chosen, is that true?
Yes, so those funds are available.
So it's still, that's what, yeah, that's what, that's what I meant to ask, is it just available, so, great, okay. Thanks.
Um, I love that you started off by letting us know that you've done some research in other districts. I think that was really helpful for me to see that this might be new to us, but certainly not new in other places. I think that was a really smart move. I was curious if you learned in those other districts, if they are able to raise the, to fundraise the full amount or if that is an ambitious goal.
Um, so two of the districts raised it to the amount where students only had to pay two hundred and fifty dollars um out of pocket. Um, and then one district was able to, well, one was two fifty, one was three hundred, and then one was completely paid out. Uh, through, and a lot of it was through corporate sponsorship.
That's great, do you hear?
Yeah.
You know, I think this is great, bringing this new idea to, to us, I think it's really gonna benefit the district and the kids. Uh, my question is, I guess relative to that is, we're, we're using a third party to run the tour for us. Do, is it maxed out at thirty or is, is the cost the same whether we bring thirty or twenty and that gets back to, do you think they will be able to get thirty students to attend?
Um, so the, the max that we can bring on the trip is fifty, um, cause they had to all fit onto a bus. But this contracted part out is, is at thirty, once we, pretty much once I put forth that this is the contract that I'd like to sign and move forward with, we will be locked into that number. Um, so if there were less students to come, then we would still essentially be responsible for the same amount. And the biggest piece of it is the transportation, it's like whether we have twenty or fifty, like transportation is about the same. Um, it really kind of comes down to the, the rooming that, that kind of knocks off some of the pricing. But essentially, once we move forward and say, okay, this is what we want to move forward with, then we'll be locked in at that number. Um, but the goal is that uh if we do reach a spot and there's like forty, forty-five kids that are interested, then being able, if we're able to, to put the money forth that the students aren't being turned away. But the goal is, yes, to reach thirty, and then if we happen to un, if we fall underneath that, then I think we will still, we'd still be responsible for the amount put forth, but I, I think that, I think thirty is, I, I, I'm very confident and ambitious that we'll reach thirty, one hundred percent.
Okay.
Ninety-nine percent.
No, I think it'd be great if we could get there, I just, I don't know the, with the majority of students, I don't know who, I don't know what group of students would be, is it mostly Metco or is it, like what, where is the profile?
Yeah, so ideally this is open to, this, this is open to every student in the district, um, grades ten, eleventh and um some twelfth graders. Um, I think one of my big goals with this whole process is to really um negate the notion that HBCUs are strictly for students of color. HBCUs are now more diverse than they've ever been. Um, and I think I want to kind of just help students to understand and realize that, which would be a lot of, um, you know, like in, in this fall, doing the Information Night and like doing a whole presentation on HBCUs and then I think potentially doing something in collaboration with guidance in the fall to really just, I, I think that there's, there's connotations where they come along with HBCUs, like, oh, I can't go there, it's not, of, you know, things of that sort. And like, I said, my goal is really to expose students, like, no, like, it's really just another, another university, the historic of it, like, were created by people who fell, but that, that doesn't mean that students don't have the option to go there. So the goal is that there's no demographic of who can and can't go. Um, I would love to see a lot of Situate students go, I think majority of our Boston students will, will be on the trip. But the goal is that, yes, that this is, this is an inclusive trip to all and that a lot of students are not only learning about HBCUs, but realizing that they have a place at them as well.
I have no, I have no idea. I guess, I, as you said.
Well, if you think about, well, I, the, the cost is high. But if you think about, cause I was doing a quick calculation, if you think about the number of trips that families will take to show these schools to people, I don't know that it's actually that high. Plus, you're getting sort of the red carpet because you have a person that's gonna give a tour and so.
And even just like the seminars, are they not?
A lot of families take a lot of visits to colleges, so this is such a great chance to put so many in one trip, so. I think a lot of people are. Great, yeah, for sure.
That's great, that, that's very exciting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I, I appreciate the thoroughness too, I think in our discussions with, you know, with uh Assistant Superintendent Lynch and Superintendent Burkhead in our policy subcommittee on all the trips that have been brought forward. I think you're, you've done a really great job with a really good example for what we're looking for in terms of thorough examples and detail into kind of when we're outlining what a trip should sort of look like when we're trying to approve something like this. And um detail level of, you know, just everything that we're sort of looking forward to encompass and answer questions as we approve things, as we send our kids out into the world and, and what we need to see, um, you know, checking the boxes and things. Um, you know, it's hard to know, kind of initially, you can only give us so much information because you don't know yet, or it can only have so much upfront, but um personally, I think this was fabulous what you described and brought forward, so thank you so much for the, the work that you've already done um to bring here tonight.
Thank you guys very much.
I guess about the fundraising, you talked to the other towns that have done this trip. Um, are they giving you fundraiser, like you said, you said you're looking for corporate sponsorship, sponsorship, are you gonna reach out to who they used and, or would you be like competing for that money, are the other towns doing this trip at the, you know, the same time?
Um, so to my understanding, there's no other districts currently doing, like has, has a trip in the works. Um, I have initially connected with them about who they utilize for the sponsorships yet. Um, I was kind of waiting for this step to then kind of take that. Um, but yeah, my goal would be to connect with them and see if there was any um like franchises, if they kind of went through or um, I know there's a lot of like franchise-based fundraisers that people get involved with, like Chipotle and pizza, um, like Papa John's and other things of that sort. So that will be of the things that I kind of question and ask about, but I think as of now, I haven't done those. And then I am aware though that there are no other HBCU tours um currently in the works for other districts.
Awesome. All right, so let's take, um, make a vote.
Um, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the HBCU tour field trip to Washington DC as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I just want to say that it's been incredible, um, just kind of being one of you guys. And this is my, one of my last tags, it's my first as Metco Director, and thank you guys very much. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Thomas. Disney World.
One trip to the next.
Feel like I should not vote for bias on the truth. I love it.
Well, good evening everyone and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, we've been doing the Disney trip bi-annually since the year two thousand. So we know pretty much what to expect. Um, we have had some um interesting learning experiences, the last of which was with uh twenty twenty with the pandemic. And uh that gave us an opportunity to vet our vendors once again. And we will go with Trudeau uh theatrical tours, um, they represent the best price. We have mandatory trip insurance as part of the deal. Um, and we're asking for Thursday, April thirtieth through Monday, May fourth of this upcoming year. Transportation will be chartered bus during the entire time down in uh Disney properties. Um, accommodations will be made off uh the downtown Disney area. Um, expected cost probably somewhere between sixteen hundred and eighteen hundred. Um, everyone will be Cory-checked as in the past in, in terms of our chaperones. Um, we routinely bring a nurse or a doctor. Um, the trip, the educational benefits for the trip really begins a ways before the actual trip. We have to prepare performance, submit a uh recording of that performance to the uh Disney organization and get uh, get cleared for performance there. Um, supervision is typically one to eight because that's the room arrangements. But sometimes it's one to ten. Um, as I mentioned, the travel insurance is mandatory for all participants and academic eligibility would come into play for participating in the trip. Um, to give you a perspective of the amount of students, it's typically in the ninety to a hundred range.
It's so much fun, I'm so.
Oh, it's awesome.
I'm sorry, it's awesome.
It is awesome. I've seen Disney quite a few times.
The kids are great, it's so much fun. They're both at Situate, so.
Kids are awesome. So I don't know if you have uh specific questions.
So you're taking a bus?
No questions for me.
No, we would fly.
I love watching my son hit the triangle down in Florida.
So, once we uh, we, we would fly to Disney and then they'd say a, a secured bus for us for the entire time.
And it looks like your, the kids would miss just two days of school, right, just Friday and the Monday?
That's right.
Talk that in my way, they take an extra day.
Yeah.
I just want to comment to Mark A, if you like, your trip also has no school days missed, which is awesome. And this is good too, I like, I like how you're only missing two days.
Yeah, we tried to minimize it, um, the differential in price for over a vacation period versus this is enormous.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially, yeah, especially.
Yeah, I mean. The finance department is just such, you know how to do it, it's a very efficient.
We hear you.
You guys are asking me to.
You can stop now.
Are you gonna be a chaperone? Yeah, this is probably like twenty trips to Disney.
Efficient.
I know it pretty well.
Um, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Disney World Orlando, Florida field trip for twenty twenty-six as presented, second.
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, let's do our liaisons.
Are we going down the list?
Yeah.
In the, in the.
I'll pull it up.
In the PDF, it's in the.
I just met at the bottom, there's a new line.
Oh, blank lines? In mine? No, there's a. All right, so, let's see. So school committee liaison assignments. Does anybody have any particulars they would like to?
Um, I just wanted to talk about capital planning for a minute.
Yeah.
Um, that was, I was happy to do it, I learned a lot actually, um, and I enjoyed it. But it was really tough for me scheduling wise, um, just because it's like eight Wednesdays in a row um in the fall. Um, so it was just really tough family-wise for me, and so if I did not have to do that again next year, I would really appreciate that. I would do it again in the future, just two years in a row, I'd like to also stay married, so. Just really helped me out if I didn't have to do that again, it was a lot of gymnastics, getting people places on the Wednesday night, it was just tough. So, um, I would just, Janice, in fact, I somehow on our official list was listed as the alternate, but I think.
I know.
I don't know what happened, I went, I don't know.
You started, you went to the first one.
Maybe next year, I'd happily be your alternate, but if you want to go.
We can leave it like this.
Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you. We can go write down a list if you want to, form one by one. Okay, advisory committee, Janice.
Very entertaining. When I, when I go.
I'm happy to entertain some swapping and bargaining.
Yeah.
By the way.
How active is advisory?
I think more so heading into like the, yeah, when the different eight um boards of groups are presenting.
Yeah, like budgeting. I get busy.
Yeah, just curious.
I also kind of think, and I know. I think this is like gonna kind of be um something to talk about maybe at our summer retreat, like I know we try to do this every year, but we should talk about how to better
explain things.
Explain them and.
Time commitment.
The time commitment and also just like give kind of reporting back, I guess it's like tough because some of them just don't meet regularly enough that we have much to discuss.
Well, like technology and stipend didn't meet at all.
Right.
So I don't even, I'm not even sure what our roles are supposed to be, so it feels like we have assignments, so it looks like we have committee assignments, but we don't really, so.
Or.
Thinking about routinely as it appears. They don't meet at all.
Yeah.
So, so it just, it's like you're counting that as a committee service, but then it's not really, so. No, not at all. I mean, I had been interested in policy, but then I noticed that you have a new task force on here, so I'm kind of curious about that and like sort of preserving that interest, depending on what you say about that, so.
Selectors usually uh chair and vice-chair, right? To contend with that.
But you don't go to every meeting, do you?
I typically watch the recording slash I circle up with the chair and we have.
So you're just in the know, kind of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Andrew. Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense. But yeah. It's okay.
I just, I watch the meetings just.
Like we'll watch the playback, so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
I don't have any official role, I'm just.
Like I check their agendas when I talk to Andrew. Attend occasionally.
And I think, um, I'm, I just feel like skipping around makes sense because there's some that don't need, like the sick, like the sick leave bank. We just had a, probably our last meeting, right, don't I think Maria, for the summer? Um, and the, the union presidents who are also on it asked if we were gonna remain on it because there's some things around policy that we're thinking about taking on. And they, so Maria and I were hoping to stay on it one more year just because we've both been on it. So we feel like we could work with the Kates to come up with some, just clarification on some procedures.
Okay.
So if that's okay with everybody?
I think probably Janice and I, I don't want to speak through Janice, but obviously we've got the same, we've got the school building.
I'm gonna say that.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have anything, like, have, Maria, you want to stay on the CF, Peter, you want to stay on?
Yeah, I, I just, to your point, Nicole, I never got invited to anything recreation, so I don't know.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I mean, I'm happy to stand up, but I didn't do anything last, this past year.
Yeah.
Planning board was great about inviting me to stuff and I would just look at the agenda and note that it usually didn't involve anything related to us and therefore didn't usually attend, but there, there's stuffs on Zoom too, so it's easy. But that was nice, I was included the whole time.
I think we can touch base maybe with Rec and get you on there. Because.
Did he know?
Yeah, Nick, we can touch base with Nick and get you.
One wondering I have is I've been trying to do the finance committees in order to um learn as much as I can for the inevitable day when Peter is no longer here. Um, and I wonder if someone else might also want to learn in the same way that I have been on the finance committees.
I'm not, I don't.
Just because I don't want all the knowledge to live with one person, Peter. Um, and I have been learning, but certainly I'm not going to ever replace Peter's depth there. Um, but that's one place that maybe um if someone else wanted to take. Um but that's one place that maybe if someone else wanted to take on any of those finance.
Forecast.
Financial forecast in particular, the meetings are very random. It's like.
They're like nine in the morning.
Nine on a Tuesday, it's like one o'clock on a Wednesday, you just never know. There's not very many of them, they're in person. I know I didn't sell that particularly well, but.
No, you did not, but.
I'm just saying, if anyone else wants to get in on the finance stuff.
Don't ever volunteer to do the marketing for the financial forecast committee.
I have learned a lot, Tom is great at explaining things, but I'm just saying like, I don't know, it makes me a little uneasy being the one to carry the torch after Peter leaves, um alone, that's all.
In Tom I trust.
Okay.
In Tom I trust, I would definitely do it.
Do you want to do it?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Yes.
Because I'm not doing any other ones.
Right.
If you haven't noticed, my name's not on it.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Oh, because collective bargaining won't be a thing this year.
Yeah.
I just want to be school, that's enough for me.
Yeah, I think it's good to have you on.
That's enough.
That's enough.
Financial forecast.
I would happily take on.
Well, you're on select board.
Yeah.
And you and I talk a lot.
You have some big habits.
Have a lot of time spent together. But I think it would be good for you to be on financial forecast too. It is very helpful.
It's just called finance?
Financial forecast.
I think they're two separate. No, it's the third one.
Here we are, yeah.
It's the third one.
They're very different.
They're different, yeah.
Yeah.
But finance, I think we only really get called in to look at the budget a little bit ahead of the budget going to everybody, I don't know what else falls under that. Oh, signing warrants.
That's been the warrants.
Signing warrants.
But you're gonna stay on that one, Maria?
I I'm happy to, but if you want to take that one too, they could be as a package bundle.
Look at her trying to.
Do you recommend that those go together, Tom, or?
They don't have to.
Not really.
Again, it's, you know.
It's warrants.
Learn as much as you can, the warrants are a little different than the financial forecast or the budget, so.
I think financial forecast is the one you're gonna learn more on, so I'll keep that one.
I'll keep that one.
Yep.
Okay. Um, alright, and then Peter, would you, you probably want to stay on your west course.
Again, I did nothing.
I feel like it's bad luck to take you off. I'll keep that.
There was some sort of trip too, but I didn't know anything about it.
The new ones that we had added um this year, so.
Oh, data.
We have the data study.
Data.
What did that do?
It's at the.
SC data study committee, Carrie and Maria are staying on.
I feel like we should stay on so we can get some momentum. We barely got started, so give us another.
Yes, I would like to stay on that.
Alright. And the one that I added today, but I'm sort of jumping ahead of, was sort of this bullying prevention and intervention task force, which I know I'm jumping ahead of, but it would be a person theoretically from our committee jumping through the item, laid out a list on our agenda. But it technically belongs on this list. Should that happen, for a conversation later on in our agenda. That would be something the added here. That were the case, would somebody on our committee, would a volunteer be on that?
I would.
Should we have a conversation with superintendent Burkett, assistant superintendent Lynch? Would someone would be a representative from our committee joining the district? Are there recommendations?
Sure.
Carrie would want to be our representative, if that was something that the district wanted.
Take up?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think Carrie would be great at that.
I'll be the person in waiting. If it happens. So, do we just vote like conditionally? Be in there?
Yeah.
Now you're. I'm in. Well, it's whether or not it comes to.
We could still liaise between.
True.
Okay, any other ones that anyone wants to? Oh, and then these ones, master plan, advisory charter review, like those are basically obsolete.
My collective bargaining is.
Collective bargaining.
It stays on there, but just.
I mean.
I don't think stipend is anything either. I don't know what that committee is for.
It was tied into collective bargaining.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm saying, yeah, whoever is on collective bargain.
I think we made a mistake online, guys, I think that was us messing up. I think it was supposed to be Maria and I.
Yeah.
From being on collective bargaining.
Got it.
So I think it should technically say. Maria and I, but I don't think we, I think it's just an A.
Okay.
Because we won't be using it.
I mean, I want something to come up.
Yeah. Alright. Alright.
Janice take us through.
I think so, unless anyone has any others they want.
Um alright, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the school committee liaison twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six assignments as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so, in terms of the summer schedule. Somebody figured this out. What do you guys think about? So we'll wait for the district and superintendent Burkett's leadership retreat, do you all have a date superintendent Burkett for your? We always gotta follow superintendent Burkett's lead on.
Their retreat.
Their retreat. Unreferrative, supportive bills guidance on, what they're doing.
August eighteenth and nineteenth.
Around like the end of that week.
And then we've got December twenty seventh.
From the beginning of the week and the twenty fifth.
Yeah, so we want to do something after there, yeah. Hold on.
Twenty first.
Twenty fifth is complication for the staff, so.
Right. Okay.
Every time I retreat, like the end of that week?
Yeah.
Like the twenty first or twenty second? What people do during the day or?
Twenty first would be better for me.
During the day or evening or?
During the day would be fine.
During the day, yeah.
Yeah, we did it during the day.
Yeah. Like half day or a day?
Take the whole day off.
It takes as much time as um anyone's willing to go scan personally.
Nine to one or nine to two, I don't want to go nine to four.
I don't think we need to do a whole day.
Like nine to one or nine to two.
Yeah.
Nine to two.
Why don't we say nine to two and then if we don't need it, we can walk it back.
The twenty first.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do it at the library again?
I like the library.
Yeah, that's good. Nine to two, we're thinking?
Yeah.
What date did you say?
August twenty first.
August twenty first.
We had a new staff orientation that day. In the morning till noon.
Would you want to join us in the afternoon though? Or did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So switch it to the afternoon?
Or do you want to be there?
Well, clear, we usually go, are we not going?
I don't.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so what if we did?
Everyone goes, okay.
We did.
So flip it to afternoon, you said you're done at noon?
Twelve to. Or one, yeah, one to. One to four.
Can we do twelve to four?
Well, because they finish up at twelve, so.
Twelve thirty? I'm just thinking, otherwise we just shortened it, we went from like, oh, we're gonna have six hours, to we're gonna have like three. We just cut it in half, that's all.
It started in the morning, gets over eleven thirty the orientation.
Oh, okay.
Twelve to four.
Twelve to four.
Somebody call the library reserve?
Yeah.
We can do that. That's the retreat and we have to come up with the meeting dates? Is that what we're doing as well?
Well, this is our summer schedule. So this is our last meeting for the summer?
Yes.
Yeah.
If the vote on that, it says summer schedule vote required.
I thought we usually scheduled one meeting in progress.
Um well, you mean like our first meeting.
Sometimes we have one on paper just in case.
Yeah, oh.
But this year, if school starts this February.
Yeah, for school week.
Twenty seven. First meeting?
I'll have to connect by Zoom, but.
Well, is that, is that what you guys were thinking about, you know, starting the meeting number here? Had you guys thought about that at all? When our lunch. Yeah. Do you know if that's in your calendar at all yet?
Um last year we did it, late August, back before school started, we did, one of these was, we had two in August, one was the retreat.
Yeah.
The, and the other one was the uh.
Meeting.
Meeting.
Just looking at like, would we do it the twenty fifth, right before the first day of school, or would we want to do it?
We can't do it the first.
Wouldn't be the first.
Holiday.
Right, and it couldn't be the eighteenth, because that's before the retreat. Just doesn't leave a lot of wiggle room.
Twenty, this is fine, I just have to connect by Zoom.
Is that, is that alright with you guys?
However, you have them on calendars. As meetings.
We'll be here.
Okay. So you want to do twenty fifth for our meeting? Okay.
Okay.
I'll be here too.
Do we have, well, that would. Don't we usually vote on the calendar for the next year, is that what, will we do that on August twenty fifth? The dates for next year is what we mean?
We can decide in the retreat or something.
Yeah, I was wondering too.
Well, they're usually like every week, every other week. On that.
Yeah, so you're saying voting for the. You're, you're just looking for the full calendar, right?
Just the school committee meeting date, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we just have the retreat and that, we can probably figure it out during the month.
Or we could draft it and have it ready for the retreat and then we have it ready to go the night of.
Yeah. Yep.
Is, is it, would it be possible to get those like as meeting invites too, in our calendar?
I know, definitely. I would do it for the group, I'm just saying, I sometimes I don't always.
I would literally have school committee every other week, but like forever.
Forever.
You just put it in the calendar, it's forever.
But then sometimes we don't have it, or it's like town meeting instead, I don't know, it's just helpful.
Yeah, I have it, yeah, I like things.
We can, we can do that.
Yeah.
Funny Maria.
She does all the.
It's like two meetings a month.
But not always.
Well, budget season, it changes.
Yeah, it changes.
It can not just, it changes around vacations.
Let's figure it out.
It's just not that hard to track.
Every other week.
I guess we should have done.
Calendar's on the website.
Figure it out, but twenty five, twenty six.
Because it's not always the other week, it's a time.
It doesn't work out the perfect.
Thank you.
Especially with like uh school vacation weeks, it's sometimes we only have one or two.
I usually just go by what's on.
Alright, listen, we have a really busy June.
I just like it in my calendar.
Let's load up the.
We just usually have.
So, do we have any? We're done after this meeting, this is it.
Nothing, so you take it off.
Yes, this is it, this is the last meeting.
Your calendar was wrong.
I'll miss it.
Alright, so just to clarify, we're gonna have the. Nothing in July. See you in August. We'll have our retreat, twelve to four, on the twenty first, and then we'll have our first school committee meeting on twenty fifth, six o'clock.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Be here before you know it. Alright, so let's vote.
And we don't have to do our Monday up uh weekly updates.
We're not gonna have Monday weekly updates over the summer, taking a break for six weeks.
Select board does what we don't.
Steph gave us the, the summer off, he was kind enough to let us get the summer off. Like, that's better than you like to still have four.
No, we wouldn't, nothing.
Doesn't really make sense. I said I would do the last one, which is next Monday, I guess, after school starts.
Alright, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the school committee summer schedule as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. We got the rest of the calendar settled soon enough. Eagerly awaiting the dates. Okay, let's move on, principal PD. It's middle school.
Hello again, and thank you for having me tonight, um I look forward to this meeting, or I have the last three years. To share our school improvement, and I'm genuinely uh serious, because uh developing and sharing a school improvement plan provides us with the opportunity to celebrate what we've accomplished in a year, and then to set goals for the following year. So every year I, I look forward to sharing wonderful things that we've accomplished, uh and to kind of give you a sneak peek into what we're doing the following year. When we talk about a school improvement plan, um it's exactly that, it's a plan for improvement. And the most important thing that we can do as a school is to improve academic performance. Uh and when we look at how the Department of Education asks schools to design school improvement plans, they ask us to kind of consider student performance in ELA and in math, um two important focus areas for us. And this links directly to our district's strategic plan, uh which focuses on increasing academic excellence for all. Um our school council, we have the best school council ever, uh there, each member is intelligent and witty and shares lots of opinions. And so our school council worked hard to analyze data related to ELA and math performance. They posed really good questions to some key stakeholders, um and together we have designed a plan for next year. The goals in this plan are not the only goals we're working on, we have lots of other goals. But in terms of a school improvement plan, we are focusing on the academic component of it. So uh when we think about our first goal, we're gonna talk about math. And our goal for next year, uh before we get into our goal, I'll give you a little bit about the story. Uh in twenty twenty four, so last spring, sixty percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations when it came to math MCAS. It doesn't mean that forty percent wasn't at, at the total bottom, because the other two categories are approaching expectations and below expectations. So at, in twenty twenty four, sixty percent of our students were at meeting or exceeding. In our spring benchmark assessment for math, uh which was using the iXL tool, sixty percent of our students performed at or above grade level. Uh and so those are fairly consistent, and what we like about the consistency there is uh last year, our iXL tool provided us with information that was not necessarily on par, uh so we like that the MCAS score and the tool we were using are fairly consistent. In terms of setting a goal for next year, um we want to continue to use benchmarking data three times during the year to measure progress in math for all students at Gates. We want all students to perform at grade level, perform or exceed. Um and we are specifically looking at uh subgroups of students, of special education students, low income students, and lowest performing students. When we look at MCAS from last year, um in terms of our high needs students, the Department of Education sets a target for us. In math, our students in that category for high needs exceeded the target that was set for them. So we anticipate that we're going to continue to improve with that subsection of students with what we're doing. Our low income students also exceeded the target that was set for them. Um our students with disabilities in math exceeded the target that was set for them. And then our lowest performing students, the lowest twenty five percent of students also exceeded the target that was set for them. So our goal is to continue to work with math. We have adopted a new progress monitoring tool for next year called STAR. It's probably something you've heard of before, um and what we like about that uh is we are now going to have one assessment tool in grades uh K through eight, uh or two through eight. And that will help us uh to kind of, instead of abandoning what happens in fifth grade and starting something new, that will give us kind of some data over time. What we also like about the STAR math assessment itself, uh is it breaks down specific skills, whereas iXL is kind of, gives us information about different things, but uh the STAR assessment provides us things with uh information about geometry, expressions and equations, fractions, functions, ratios. So it gives us targeted areas that students can continue to grow in, along with recommendations for teachers and specialists to provide for students. And we are right now in our first year of the implementation of our new math program, um and so it's nice because we have some consistent. And we are right now in our first year of the implementation of our new math program, um, and so it's nice, because we have some consistency with high quality instructional materials, so we also expect there to be gains, uh, based on the curriculum that is, uh, set forth. Um, in terms of how we will measure progress in this school, uh, if we achieve this goal or make progress in it, our beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year assessment data will tell us that, as well as our locally designed, uh, common assessments in all grade level math classes, so that's how we will tell if we are moving forward. Um, it is an ambitious goal to say we want a hundred percent of kids, uh, to be working at grade level, um, or exceeding grade level, but if we say something smaller, we're not setting the bar high for our kids, and that's what we want. Um, we can drill down, uh, with the data that we have and the data that we're going to get, to make sure that individual students are growing. Um, and again, they're exceeding the targets that the state is setting for them, but we can continue to do better, and we're excited about the work we have for that. So that's math, um, in ELA, we, it's a very similar goal, um, the story behind this is we looked at our MCAS data from spring twenty four, and fifty nine percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations. The other students fell into the category of partially meeting expectations or not meeting expectations. Uh, we gave a assessment called Achieve Three Thousand this year, uh, and we gave that at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year, uh, and at our end of the year for our current six through eight students, forty seven percent of the students are performing at or above grade level. Um, however, when we look at our MCAS scores, um, and our MCAS data, the average ELA student growth continues to fall into that typical growth percentile, so we're happy that, um, when kids are being compared to themselves, they are growing. Um, we did a lot of talking with our English department chair and our assistant superintendent, uh, and our English teachers to say, talk to us about this tool that we adopted this year. Um, it provides us with a student's Lexile information, which is their literal reading comprehension. Um, and that's a very important tool, but what it doesn't do is it doesn't tell us kind of, so what? What do we need to work on, where are the areas each individual student needs to grow in? And so we are adopting STAR next year, uh, as our ELA progress monitoring tool. Again, the consistency between elementary and secondary will be valuable to teachers, will be valuable to parents, as you are, you know, getting the same reports and same information, and you'll be able to see growth over time, as opposed to saying we've started something new. Um, what's great about, uh, this STAR assessment too, is it breaks down into different strands, so instead of just saying you are reading at a sixth grade reading level, it's gonna tell us where the student's strengths and areas of, of growth, uh, are in terms of reading literature, reading informational text, language, um, so we are abandoning our friends at Achieve Three Thousand and making new friends at STAR. If we, uh, make progress in this goal, we'll be able to tell through the data that we get from our beginning and middle and end of year assessments, uh, through STAR, as well as our grade level locally designed, uh, common assessments. So that is math and ELA, both very important areas, and those are going to be part of every school improvement plan we ever bring to you. Um, and only because that's a large percentage of our student accountability, uh, that these areas also, when we look at MCAS data, when we look at, you know, how is our school doing, uh, these are two very, very important measures, and we're always going to want to improve, whether that category is, you know, sixty percent of kids are at grade level or ninety percent, uh, when we look over time, the growth, uh, we're pleased with the growth. We obviously still have a lot of room to grow, but, um, we're pleased with what we're doing. Uh, goal number three, uh, is, the story behind goal number three is we were fortunate to participate in the S3 Academy. We're in our second year, um, and it's been a wonderful experience, we've had coaches, and what the S3 Academy is, it's, uh, kind of a way to implement this concept of a whole child review, looking at students, uh, as human beings, as students, as academic scholars, as, uh, growing little human beings, and then kind of help us to design plans to support and promote the growth in all of these different areas. Um, it is a three-year academy offered through the Department of Education and Boston College and the Rennie Center. Um, we are entering year three next year, um, by the end of next year, what we really hope to do is we hope to have a, conducted a whole child review for one hundred percent of students at Gates, um, and design plans that are targeted to their individual needs. This year, uh, we were able to conduct two hundred twenty nine whole child reviews, which is thirty five percent of our student body. Um, that was with having bi-annual, or not bi-annual, bi-weekly meetings, um, every member of our staff is a member of an MTSS team, every counselor facilitates one, every administrator is a part of one, um, so by capturing two hundred twenty nine students and kind of making some changes to our schedule for next year, we hope to, by the end of next year, have conducted one hundred percent of, um, whole child reviews for students, so the evidence of that goal will be the number of whole child reviews that we have been able to conduct. Um, we kind of, uh, moved very quickly, uh, the academy suggests, uh, kind of implementing after your third year with the academy. We, year two jumped in, so we are ahead, um, we're happy with the progress we've made. Uh, we also have evidence of, you know, the students who do have plans in place already, making progress, but each plan looks very different, so when we're looking at the success of whole child reviews, it's, it's kind of catered to the individual plan, we will need to determine what's, um, successful there. And our very last, uh, very last goal, goal number four, uh, and this is, you know, this was the exciting one that our school council worked on. Uh, we worked this year to, uh, do a lot of research into schedules, um, and scheduling, specifically how to offer targeted support and intervention and acceleration to students at the secondary level. We did a lot of visits to schools around us, uh, we had lots of conversations with high schools, with middle schools, um, and we ultimately came up with a schedule which needed to, uh, be, you know, worked on, and then a shared understanding built with lots of different people, specifically teachers. Um, and we are proud to say that we adopted a schedule for next year, uh, which will allow every student to have a block of time, uh, every single day that is meeting their needs, uh, based on a targeted, specific area. Um, and so in the past, we've been able to say about fifty percent of our kids will get some intervention or will get some support. We can say with confidence that one hundred percent of our students next year will have a block of time that they are getting direct instruction from a member of our staff in an area that they need to, so that was a, a big part of our work for this year. Um, a hundred sixty six students this year received supports, uh, from, uh, ELA and math specialists, so that's about twenty six percent of our student body. Zero students received formalized math, uh, or ELA acceleration, they got it here and there, but nothing was formalized. And thirty percent of our students received formalized SBL supports through different groups. Next year, um, one hundred percent of our students, we will be able to say, received tier supports in either academics, social emotional, um, wellbeing, learning, uh, and specifically math in ELA. So, uh, what we can say is this, uh, we're excited about this, and when we come back next year to celebrate, uh, you will see, the data that we bring will be the progress data, uh, not just to say a hundred percent of kids got it, but it will say, these number of kids received supports in this particular area of math, and here is how they improved post, pre to post. Um, this number of students received attendance intervention, and, uh, this is where they started, and this is where they ended. So we are really excited about this, our school council, um, you know, is really proud of the way we were able to maneuver everything, because, um, you know, middle school is, is often a, a time where kids want everything and sign up for everything, and once they, you know, start to sign up for things, their opportunities are limited, given the constraints of the schedule, but, um, we are super excited for this one, um, and ultimately look forward to bringing it back to you next year with the success. So, those are our four goals, again, uh, this, this doesn't mean that we're not, you know, looking to do lots of other things, but, um, these are the ones that are linked to our school improvement plan that we're excited to work on next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Jonathan?
Um, these are great, Ryan, thank you so much. Um, I did have one question on the STAR, and Ryan Lynch, you might know this, I might not explain this well, I'm gonna try. I know in the elementary grades, we moved to a STAR benchmark that was, uh, a higher standard than the typical nationally normed STAR benchmark. Um, is that what you are referencing, or are you referencing the, the Massachusetts version or the nationally normed version? Do you know? It was, it was a, it was a shift that the elementary schools made, I think just this year, after having implemented STAR for a number of years, they kind of realized the reason the STAR was not planning up with MCAS. So I was just curious if you were coming in at that level, or if you're kind of starting and moving from the national first?
I know what, um, what our math and ELA department, Joseph and Dawn is working with their elementary counterparts.
Okay.
Um, you know, in terms of selling this to people, that, the predictability from STAR to MCAS, that is why we want this.
Why you're doing, yeah.
Um, so we are, I would say, going with the.
You make for that higher risk.
Yes, for the higher risk.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
The state benchmark, that's right, yeah.
Thank you, that's what I was going for. Um, and then my only other question was, I really liked the way that you described, um, the wind blocks and the, you know, one hundred, guaranteeing one hundred percent of kids receiving interventions that they, that they need, that sounds amazing. Um, I know that we will probably get questions about, are IBCs still gonna be around, what's happening with, you know, advisor? I don't know if you're ready to talk about that publicly, but if you had any assurances about that, and, and vision of questions.
We're not taking away all the fun, uh, in this new schedule, but how this, how this is gonna work is, um, wind blocks will be every six to eight weeks.
Okay.
So, um, they'll do a wind block for six weeks, and then we'll do IBCs for a week.
Okay.
Every day.
Oh, okay.
So instead of doing it like every other day, we will use a week to do interest-based clubs,
Okay.
which will then allow us to look at our next set of data to say, and these, we're gonna move these kids into this group. It also serves as a, you know, middle school, sometimes kids need a carrot, um, and it's nice to say, like, if you work very hard and you're, you're winning, and we're gonna work and use our brains, now we're gonna take some time to do what we're interested in, and, you know, if we can run those a couple times during the year, um, to me, that will be a, a win.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, one third of your clientele will, will be none the wiser anyway.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you. I thought those are great, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a question around, um, goal one, I know it's student-centered appropriately, so I'm just curious, Ryan, knowing that the new math curriculum had just been implemented, I was surprised that none of the action items sort of reflect pedagogy or observation of teachers, or sort of what does that process sort of look like? Cause while it's not a direct to the student, it is obviously a huge contributor, so I'm just wondering, what are you thinking about that? Or how are you thinking about that?
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good question, and I think, um, the, the how, how are we going to get kids into, uh, you know, this category of a hundred percent of kids performing at grade level? It's not just about assessing and analyzing results, it really is, let's look at the student experience. Um, part of kind of an improvement plan, uh, is the action steps we're gonna be taking to measure progress towards, uh, you know, the goals that we have set. Um, I would say going to the idea of not every goal that we have is linked in the school improvement plan. I think the analysis of, of teaching, the collaboration, or not collaboration, but calibration of effective teaching strategies, you're gonna see these in different pockets, um, it's not necessarily a math goal or an ELA goal, um, but I would say it's, it's definitely a focus, um, in terms of could we expand on some of the action steps and say, we will do a, you know, we will do a training, uh, to make sure we're utilizing the resources effectively and using instructional strategies that get outcomes? Yes, so I, I do think, um, those can definitely be added, and I appreciate that, um, you know, that feedback in the sense of where does the teaching part come in? Um, I think when we're talking about measurable impacts, um, you know, I, I, I think that is an area that we can continue to have conversations on of, of how do we measure the impact of specific teaching strategies on student learning? Um, but I, I think you've given me good, good, good ideas for the, the.
Well, I think it's also, you know, we're, we are parents in the community and we hear, so I think even just getting ahead of questions that are coming from families, even if it's you coming, you know, late fall to tell us sort of what's the reflective process look like, and what were you doing, and what are you doing differently around pedagogy, might be a good thing for families to hear, cause we get all sorts of data in different ways that isn't always good data.
Right.
And I think that links to my other, just sort of wanting from the middle school, is I appreciate that there'll be some sharing of success stories in June, um, because some of this is new and exciting, the whole child review, the wind blocks, the math curriculum. You know, I know you're a super busy leader in the schools, and I would just encourage you maybe to come mid-year and not wait till the end, because I know we'll all be wondering how it's going, and so to the extent you can give us even just sort of anecdotal updates, might be helpful.
Thank you for that, and I think we, we've learned from our elementary counterparts of having kind of family nights and, um, ways to communicate, instead of just sending you parent, parents and then caregivers a report of, here's, here's your child's data. Um, we need to help people interpret that, we need to help people understand what it means and what it doesn't mean, so whether it be coming back to the committee and then sharing that, or finding ways to increase kind of parent and then caregiver involvement in that academic piece, I feel like that we're learning from our elementary folk, um, how to actually do that, and then the success behind it, so.
Um, I really like your focus, especially in goal four, on, you mentioned like acceleration, I really think there's so much to capture there, and there's just so much energy that can be, and just that spark of learning and the middle school level of young learners still, you saw that innocence that you can really sort of springboard with some of these kids that you know is there, and that I think you just haven't, you've just had an opportunity to really, you know, especially with COVID, and it's like really kind of pulling ourselves back together, and there's such a joy of learning still, that you can really, um, especially in, in your building, just like the environment being, um, you know, it's just there for the taking, and I think you have the, the right, you have the recipe, and you can just take it and run with it, so I think you can do well with that, especially in that goal, so excited to see you bring it to life in those students.
Yeah. And well, and we have the time now to do it, because in, in, in thinking about, kids' schedules are so jam-packed, um, and when you have a, a classroom of, you know, twenty five kids, uh, and their needs are, are very different.
Yeah.
Um, this will give us an opportunity to really use the data to say, who needs acceleration? And great, we're going to, you know, provide you with this opportunity for acceleration, knowing that kids have different, some kids might need acceleration in math and, and extra support in ELA, so it really, um, the structure, now that we have the structure, we're gonna see some very hopefully great results that will transcend, uh, into not just the academics, but that joy and that love of learning too.
Absolutely. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
See you back in a minute.
Yes. Mark will be quick.
Alright, Mr. Laringer.
Thank you.
Can you talk about lacrosse for a second?
Yeah. I was trying to exit, I'm sorry.
Forgot to say at the beginning, you want to say it, you wanna say it, you can say it.
Lacrosse? Congratulations, Olivia.
Congratulations.
So our high school won two state titles, which is really difficult to do, really difficult to do, so. Uh, Scott Payne, believe me, he knows, he's, he's pretty excited about it, he knows, kinda give him a hard time about, he's athletic director of the year, doing really a lot of good things. So my, my school improvement plan, I remember I came up here last year and I had six, and, and, and some of my principal friends, uh, that I shared the, they said, you have six? I said, I get six, I said, you're crazy, you're not gonna get to do six, so, so I got it down to three now, and, and we worked our, really hard with our, um, school council to put this all together, uh, our school council, like, what Ryan said, is outstanding, and we actually enjoy our meetings, we have a good time, sometimes they run longer than, than normal, but there, some really, really good students on it are outstanding, the parents are great, and the community rep was my high school principal, so he lives here in Situance, so when I got hired, he reached out and said, if you ever need anything, please reach out to me, so I reached out to him and said, would you be interested in being part of my school council? So it's really nice to have, we tell a lot of good stories, sometimes him and I stay later after the meeting and just talk about high school days, it's kind of fun. Um, so our first goal is our, uh, wind block, and, and we're still trying to put some supports in place for our kids, um, to receive more academic and emotional support, so, so, uh, some of our action steps is, um, we're gonna run wind block this year for seven, seven-day cycle rather than five, and that gives us more time with our kids. And that gives us more time with our kids. It gives us more time with the students, particularly the students that are struggling academically. And what we're going to do is instead of it being a five-day cycle and day one being the day that they sign up, and that kind of gets eaten up. Half of that block kind of gets eaten up. We're going to a seven-day cycle now where it's less meeting times with kids choosing their blocks. And then this is a really good, exciting thing that we have. And we have a, we proposed a new sailor block on Wednesday. Sichuan High School's never had a wind block on Wednesdays. And we got voted in, staff voted it in. What we're always trying to do is find time for students, trying to find time to work with our kids. It's so hard to find it in our schedule. So we got the sailor block ordered in. It's going to be a two-lunch format. And it provides another good chunk of time that we can work with our kids. In that block, we're going to put things into like academic overtime. What academic overtime means is that any student that's failing a class, he or she has to, two times out of the seven-day rotation, report to that academic staff member for extra support to try to increase our grades. We're going to have quiet study rooms, test rooms, AP study sections, things like that. Because one of the things the staff was saying to us was that, our wind block, the way it's currently formatted, the students go into a classroom looking for support and the teacher also has two or three other kids there that are there for other reasons. We're going to have within each, within each group, we're going to have study groups. So they're going to be able to, there's going to be a spot for students to go to do some quiet work, to study for tests, to do certain things they want to do. So I think that's going to be a real good thing. And I think adding that wind block, sailer block is a huge, huge change and improvement to our support that we're trying to put in place. What's going well, our peer data, we talked, I think I talked a little bit with this before, but in 2023, 91% of the students at Sichuan High School felt connected. And last year, this year's was 95%. So that makes people crossing the line on graduation feeling good about Sichuan High School, which I think if they don't want to be there and they're not happy to be there, it's going to be really hard to teach them and keep motivated to be there. And then our attendance rate to date right now is 94.3%, which is a good number. AP numbers, we had 76% of our students received a three or better on their AP exams last year. So we're trying to increase that each year, but we're trying to get that to a better number. And how are we going to measure it? By tracking improvements, using data, benchmark assessments, our students' grades. And we're going to try to decrease, one of the big goals is we're going to try to decrease our chronic absentee rate. The junior class has a high chronic absentee rate, so we're going to try to decrease that by 50%. I think there's like 21 or 22 students in that class alone where they, and the high chronic absentee rate means that they've missed 18 days or more. And some of it's due to social emotional shit. Some of it's due to certain things. We're going to try to really pinpoint and meet with those kids. I'll go through to the next school with our new MTSS that we're putting in to try to gear some of our supports towards those students and see how we can support them.
Mrs. Your current junior is going to be seniors next year.
No, current sophomore is going to be juniors.
Oh.
Yeah. I don't think your students are on. Our second goal. Our second goal is the new MTSS format that we instituted at Sichuan High School for next year. And that format's going to be support and help all students. Ryan has actually helped me a lot with this because the middle school is off to a good start with this. So we're picking up and getting it started this year, this upcoming school year. We're going to establish teams of teachers to review data and go through with the Open Architex program that we're putting in. We're going to complete the whole child review process for every student at Sichuan High School. It might take a couple of years to do so, but we're going to work towards those goals and create time for teachers to meet, to look at MTSS support. So we're going to put our teachers in groups of six to seven with a group of kids, a list of students that they will track and take a look at, look at their scores, their attendance, look at the social, emotional, and then put supports in through some of the new wind block supports. So the wind block and the MTS is going to work hand-in-hand with supporting our kids. So we'll take some of those students and we'll make sure that they're supported during wind block. What's going well, we have number supports in place, number support classes. We have math support classes, foundations of math for ninth and problem solving for 10th, biology support classes, the wind block supports with the new AOT format, the academic support. Students that are failing classes, we're going to put those in place and then guidance check-in. So guidance during wind block is going to have an open door policy where students can go into guidance and meet with their guidance counselors and go through anything as far as even college writing essays or into giving them social, emotional support if they need some extra time with their guidance counselors. We're going to try to add more tier-two and tier-three supports and we're going to track student growth through achievement based on courses, grades, benchmark assessments, MCAS, peer, and other indicators. And our last goal, this is obviously one of my favorites. I really, we're really trying to keep our high school and build our positive, equitable community school culture, creating a safe, well-known environment in our high school. And I think that's why you're seeing our peer data really comfortable with kids coming to school and hopefully that would help our chronic absentee rates and so on and so forth. But we're going to do year two of our career, college, and community day. We're going to improve that. We've got some changes in place. One of them is we're going to go to another trade school so that students, because not everybody wants to go to college, so we're going to give other students opportunities. So we're going to go to the laborers' union, which is also sheet metalwork and that sort of stuff. And then electrical as well. So we're going to hit the electrical unit too. So a couple of field trips there. We are going to do a wall with students this year, and this is kind of funny, but I kind of love it. So every freshman student that walks in, we're going to have a freshman wall, a sophomore wall, a junior wall, and a senior wall. And yes, I'm going to cover it, some kind of covering, because I know kids will draw mustaches on this. But every single student, we're going to get a picture of every single student in our building and we're going to make a wall with them. So every student's going to, because they're all important. So that every student understands that you're important and each grade will have a wall with students, you know, whatever grade they're in. And then continue with student celebrations. This year, we gave up cards. We had asked faculty to write a card for every senior that's graduating. And as part of my graduation speech, they read the card and the teacher said something nice about one of the graduates. So it was really cool. So things like that. What's going well, sale of the month is awesome. I still, I love, kids still go down the hallway and, you know, April sale of the month, Mr. Larranger, best things ever happened to me in this high school. We had a kid playing in the Super Bowl and he got sale of the month the day he was playing in the Super Bowl. And I said to him, whether you win or lose on the Super Bowl, the greatest thing that's happened to you is you were sailor of the month. So he's walking on the field and he goes, Mr. Larranger, win or lose, I'm sale of the month. I go, you got it. So having some fun with that. Our new mentor program that Mrs. Kirk brought, some students in hand, we're up to like 38 mentors now, making that connection from the, you know, the ninth graders coming in up to our older kids mentoring them, which is really good. Class cup participation in our peer data is really good. We're going to add some of the mentor's tests, we're going to add positive changes to college, career, and community day. Like I said, we're going to look at other avenues and create some student surveys. So what are they getting out of this and what would they like to see down the road? You know, so students can give us some feedback and input. And then year three, we're going to take that data and really add some changes to it. We're going to create the space for that wall, those important walls for the four grade levels and increase the number of students and extra activities is another goal of next year. We're going to try to get a student involved in at least one activity. We have a lot of clubs, bands, sports, so try to get students involved in at least one activity. And when we study our MTSS data and we look at meeting with the kids and do a whole child review, students that aren't involved in activities, that's going to be one of the goals. Is that we're going to get together and say, what activity are you interested in? And try to get them in something outside of the classroom, some kind of support outside of the classroom. Some kind of, yeah. And that's my three.
I guess I have a question that really cuts across all three goals. I think it's similar to the conversation we had with the elementary schools. I'm trying to figure out, given the pair data, the strong connections that they're feeling, the better attendance rate saved for the juniors that are having trouble, the AP seem to be in good stead. You've gotten lots of positive feedback around school culture. I'm just curious, like what problems are we solving for? So when you want to restructure the wind block, how are you going to, like, what's success going to look like if you already have, you know, this pair data that's saying there's strong connections and they're doing well? You know, with the MTSS, you said you're going to look at changes in pair and MCAS. Well, what changes are you hoping to see?
We're going to look at like even simple things like how many students are failing classes, you know, and try to lower that number by adding these extra supports.
So give us a sense, so how many, like what percentage of your students are failing classes?
I don't know off the top of my head what percentage it is, but it's, and it varies from term to term. It really does. It varies from term to term. But when we look at students that are failing classes and a lot of it's geared towards not just academics, it's just that there's stuff that is in personal life that's going on. So we're trying to put in some kind of supports that would help them emotionally and maybe get them in school.
I don't, so I don't disagree that these things are important. What I'm wondering about is if this is important enough to be a part of your school improvement plan, it makes me wonder, like, what's the compelling data that's saying failing classes is the issue? Or you mentioned activities, like being really critical. 100% agree. The question I have is what percentage of our high school students are not engaged in activity that's leading you and your team to pick this, you know, positive and equitable school culture as a goal?
Right now, that's under 10% are not involved in an activity.
So then the question is, what makes this an important yet? If 90, over 90% of our students are already engaged in activities, that's all I'm.
Because the students that aren't involved in the activities are the students that are not doing well. Not all of them, but a lot of those students aren't doing well academically.
Yeah. Then I guess what I would say is, and I'm going to stop and I would love for my colleagues to speak up. I guess what I would like to see in your goals is have them be specifically targeted.
Okay.
So if our juniors, like, because the first thing I saw there was 96% or 95% attendance. And I was like, oh, all the work you did to meet them and drag them in and not make them late is working. But then it said, I want to increase, I want to reduce chronic of juniors. So like, should the goal be more focused on our juniors or the rising juniors, right? Like, it seems like there's a very specific place where this is a struggle. But again, that's just, I don't know. It's just my opinion. I just, I think, the last thing I'll say, Principal Larranger, is my worry is we're going to get to the end of next year. And so like for goal two, your measure of success is changes in pair and MCAS. Well, if pair is already at 95 and 96% feeling connection, what I'm wondering is, how are we going to know that what you did was successful? Is there another part of pair that you're going to be monitoring to be able to come back to us and say, all that great stuff that we did, look at the, well, look what happened to pair? And what I'm worried about is if you're already at 95%, you don't have a lot of room to move.
Some of it might even be to maintain that level. Keep it at that point where we're not dropping. Because if we're dropping, we've got to analyze why and try to reconnect.
Yeah. So that would feel more reasonable to me than saying like a change. And I just want to, I want you to leave yourself room for success. And so just being clear about what that is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really agree with that. I have the same thought. And I also just was thinking about what, so like you referenced benchmark assessments as a metric, but it's a little bit unspecific. And I think we've talked about this before as like that's an area that high school, we've been working at, trying to get, figure out what those benchmark assessments are. And I'm not sure that we have them fully yet. And so if we don't have them yet fully, in the way that you need them in order to be able to say, like, yes, I really know that I'm able to track, like Ryan was talking about the usefulness of STAR, how that's going to provide him with exactly what he needs to know in order, are the kids improving? That's obviously the goal of benchmark assessments and that's the gold standard. They're not as available, I guess, for high school. And we've talked about that before. It's a little more challenging for us to find them and implement them, all of that. What I wonder is, should your goal actually be back a step? And are you still at the kind of like identifying those assessments and getting yourself to a place where you are able to say, you know, really that you're able to monitor? Like, I think some of the, you kind of are getting there on some of your win goals. I think you have the same idea as Ryan. Like, you want to be able to know what each of your kids needs and know that you're able to give them what they need throughout the year, right? It's the same concept, but I think you just might be in a slightly different place. And so I'm just wondering about how, and I don't have the answer. I don't know if Ryan, if you even have other things to add. But I just was thinking about maybe if high school's in a different place and we don't have those assessments yet, and that's why this is vague, maybe the goal is actually that we focus more on the implementation and the sourcing of those so that we can get to the place where we can be more specific, you know, about the type of growth that we're looking for.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I think our mid-year data shareout is pushing that process forward. I know for Dennis Burkett, he's going to speak about that later on as part of his goals presentation. But like the stamp testing and like word language, I think is evidence of a strong benchmark. Some of the work that's happening in our PE and wellness domain. So it is a good point that those are still developing. But I think we have a lot, there's a lot of strength across departments that they can converge. So I do, we're going to keep working on our benchmarks to align them. But I think that's all detail. It could have gone under. Goal one is to continue that work as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about how to get this to a level where it's like a little bit more specific. Like agreeing with what Carrie was saying, we would love to be able to know for sure in a year from now, you know, did we do these things? And I feel like what I'm just grasping for still is like, I'm not sure we're going to know that. You know, pair is the clearest piece of data in here, but that's also the shining star. And like you were saying, our goal is maybe to maintain. So that's great, but we don't have that same kind of corollary in other areas named here. And so it's a little bit hard to be as specific. And that's kind of what I think I would love to see.
One of the specific goals pieces was the AP exams at three and better. I think we're at 76%. So I'm very interested when that data comes out to see where we scored this year. And then with these supports in place, are we going to be able to increase those? Because not only are we going to look at to support the students that are struggling academically, but also the high-level thinking students, students that are doing well with AP study sessions and allow those students that are taking those rigorous courses time within the day, especially with the new wind block on Wednesdays, with a little more block of time, time within the day that they can prepare and study and improve their scores as well. You know, they're dying for time. They don't have enough time to do their score. So some of this extra wind block and that extra wind block that we're doing on Wednesdays is going to help some of those students.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think you have to be a little more creative, maybe, you know, especially with changes to the MCAS and 10th grade. We don't know how that will affect, you know, students' scores on those. We're not sure if they'll be as reliable as they once were. And so I just feel like, I know it's there. It's like we got to just pull it out a little, tease it out just a bit more, I feel like, in order to really say with more certainty, like, yeah, we're getting there.
Thank you. That's good feedback. Thank you.
We don't do a handbook?
Um, handbook.
We have a handbook.
All right. Um, are we going to do a high school handbook first or just?
Sure. All right. So our high school handbook changes. We have, we reworded the course selection policy in 21. It's just, most of it's wording, but just to make sure it was a little bit more clear on when students can ask to change courses. Sometimes students are coming in saying, I don't want to take that course anymore. It's because they don't like the teacher or because they don't like somebody in their class. So coming up with some wordage in there that does it like, you know, it's, it has to be educatedly, it has to be an educational decision with the teacher's input and things like that. So the next one is we updated the cheating plagiarism to include AI. Page 32, that's consistent throughout the district. Our competency determination policy in place of MCAS requirements is on page 35. Our new National Society language, that's on page 48. And then we updated the student response use of technology so that we're consistent with the district and all that the tech department had sent us. And then we removed sale from the handbook because I think that's just a little bit outdated. And we took the anchor blocks out of, because we're no longer having anchor blocks. There's no more studies in high school. Not a ton of changes. And then we, Scott Payne had one athletic change too. And he was, he reworded the, we were having students that were going on driving time. They were taking their tests, their driving tests. And in the handbook, it said, if you take, you know, if you miss practice or you can't play in the game. So we reworded that, that if it's driving time, you can't reschedule the driving, not driving time, testing, to take a test. You can't reschedule. You can't reschedule the test. So we reworded in the handbook saying that if you have an appointment to take your tests, let your coach know and and fasten and fasten and you won't be penalized uh from the team from that. And there were no other changes in that.
Does that include permit or just license?
Permit and license, yeah. Because those are scheduled appointments. It's not fair to the student. Like, I had a student come down to me in tears saying, I can't play in my game because. I said, no, 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 wait a minute, you can't, they they can't reschedule the appointment. It could take six months. So so we're just trying to work the kids.
So it covers both.
Exactly, yeah, it covers both, yeah.
Um, yeah, all right. Make a motion, our high school handbook?
I'll make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Situate High School Student Handbook for the school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
High school handbook?
Okay, so we have a couple of changes uh for the proposed handbook for next year. Page seven and eight is some updated staffing lists, uh, page nine, the updated district calendar. Page nineteen, we removed language about the enrichment block because we no longer have the enrichment block. Uh, page twenty to twenty-two, updated the immunization guidelines. Uh, we had some leftover pieces in there for COVID, which uh the nurse leader gave us approval to remove uh for the proposed handbook. Uh, on twenty-five, we updated and clarified our um National Junior Honor Society academic eligibility requirements. It, and it's long overdue. Um, it used to say accumulative GPA of three point eight. Um, and does that mean every year? Does that mean overall, three or three years? So we really spelled out what that meant so that there's not any confusion for anyone. Um, as Principal Larranger just said, we uh adopt or we are proposing adopting the updated plagiarism, cheating, and artificial intelligence information um that was created by the district AI group. Um, what's nice about this is it has kind of a clear process uh for students and families to be aware of um and how we're going to not only educate students, but hold them accountable um if they are kind of violating this uh policy or this way we handle it. Um, and then page twenty-eight to twenty-nine uh was the updated student responsible use of technology, which uh was produced by the technology department and uh we're that is responsible for that. So those are our proposed changes for twenty-five, twenty-six. And we're proud that it's still under thirty pages. It could go up to thirty-one and we had to get rid of some.
Yeah.
Excellent work. All right, make a motion, Gates Middle School Handbook?
Make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Gates Middle School Student Handbook for school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. All right, um, Superintendent Burkett, turning it over to you on our um legal engagement and fee agreement from our law firm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this um is a contract between our attorneys, Lemire Murphy and Lemire, which expires June thirtieth of this year. Uh, we had an existing three-year contract that we've worked this uh firm for at least five years. I've been here and then several before that. So they represent the school committee, but they also do a lot of work with us on the front lines. They have multiple attorneys that deal with different litigation advice, feedback, those types of things. So the three-year contract that you have in your packet would be something that you vote on and discuss. The salary uh excuse me, cost per hour is slightly above um current rate. But just knowing the last contract, it was a set rate for three straight years with no raising fees. So I don't think it's unreasonable and doing a little shopping around this. This is not uncommon, not too high, not too low, affordable. And they've done, according to our team, a good job. So we'll leave, turn it over to you and be happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkett. Anyone have any questions about this contract?
All right, um, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the legal engagement and fee agreement from law firm Murphy Lemire and Murphy as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can vote on it. I'll explain why. Don't have to.
Does it, does our vote matter? I thought that was up to your decision.
Yes, it is.
We didn't have a, so we don't.
We made it.
Okay. All in favor?
Go to B.
Please, uh, Dr. Rabb? That's right.
My correction, yeah, sorry.
That's, we need to do this.
So, we go?
Do we just make a motion on that?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's lined by the chair at school.
Right.
So do you see the change to the motion instead of saying that? Has to say Dr. Rabb or Dr. Rabb, yeah, that's it? Just the one?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the non-union contract with Dr. Rabb as presented.
Second.
All right. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, turn it over to Dr. Rabb.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm really pleased to present the negotiated union contracts this year. Uh, we've spent the entire spring, we've spent two hours in executive session two weeks ago going over the details of each one of these. And I think as you, and we'll, we'll vote each one separately, but just to talk in general, every one of them really support retention, longevity, but also recruitment. And so we worked on both sides of the equation to really make sure we were bringing in the best people, but also retaining the people that we have. And I, you know, particularly if we can begin with the Situate Teachers Association, you know, Mrs. Brenda Levy and Mrs. Benwick were at each of several four, five, six-hour meetings. And I think what we learned is really working closely together with the teachers, um, you know, money's important, but so are some of the other languages, language information that we talked about. We standardized common planning time, we standardized collaboration time, and all of that was important and really a great work that we did. So again, I haven't done this kind of thing here before, but really over the spring, working with all the unions has been very instructive for me, learning about the needs of the unions, the needs of the people that work for us. Um, and I think we came to very fair and equitable contracts with them. So I I do think we need to vote individually um on each one.
Yeah.
Um, we can begin with the STA.
Should I write it in?
I'm ready.
Yeah, when I'm ready, I'll vote it.
Good strategy.
Yes.
All right. Uh, I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Situate Teachers Association twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight contract as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Keep going.
Sure. Next is our paraprofessionals.
Yep.
So I I, do you want me to say a few words or just kind of run through them?
Sure.
It's a sub听完.
Say a few words.
I think we came to a very fair and equitable uh agreement with our paraprofessionals. We had one meeting, we talked to them, they really outlined some of their needs and wants, and they're very excited moving forward.
Okay, great. Uh, I make, oh. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the paraprofessionals chapter SEIU, SEIU Local Eight Eight Eight, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight contract as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Similarly, we're working very closely with the Situate cafeteria personnel. Uh, in this contract, we really focused on retention. We wanted to keep the cafeteria workers that we have, and so we added some steps to that contract, and it's worked out very well for them.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Situate cafeteria personnel SEIU Local Eight Eight Eight, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight contract as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And for our Situate um bus and van drivers, we worked hard to come up with an equitable contract that has pay similar to surrounding towns as well as first student, again, with the same notion of retention.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Situate bus and van drivers AFS CNE Local Seventeen Hundred, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight contract as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And similarly with the Situate school custodians, we worked hard to add some steps to retain the custodians that we have and the excellent staff that we do.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Situate school custodians AFS CNE Local Seventeen Hundred, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight contract as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll respectfully request that we table the administrative assistance contract for now.
Yep.
Um, we're still working very closely with them. We're very close to finishing, um, but we just need one or two more meetings just to to firm that up. And I'm certain that we'll have something for you for the summer.
Okay. Good. All right, let's move on. Thank you very much, Dr. Rabb. All right, um, let's move on. We're going to discuss now our bullying prevention policy, JICFB.
Yep. Um, okay, so I can get started. I was the one that brought this up last time. So um, I think we.
I can put it up there.
Oh, thank you. Um, so in the interim between last meeting and now, um, I've done some additional reading and learning. And so I think our typical process with policy when we bring it up for discussion is that it gets kicked to the um policy subcommittee, which we have now established will be going forward, myself and Janice and Ryan Lynch. Um, and we also learned that within our policy is the um bullying prevention and intervention plan, which is in fact due for a review, and that that review is typically conducted by a working group or task force. And um Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Lynch was not here last time when we did this. Um, but um I think is under Superintendent Burkett and Assistant Superintendent Lynch's purview to figure out how that working group will work and who will be part of it and all of that. But it seems to me that the policy uh review should happen in tandem with that working group so that one does not get ahead of the other because they have to work together. Um, I will also say, our current policy is very much aligned with MASC's model policy. Uh, so I think keeping the policy as is while we're conducting the review makes sense. Um, and I think that also is the process that we would typically follow on this. Um, I don't know if anyone has any other thoughts? Or if you guys want to talk at all about the, I don't know if you've thought about this at all or if this is something that we would pick up and follow.
Yes.
Superintendent Burkett, I think.
Yeah, thank you. And uh, this topic has come up recently, and I I think it's great timing and something we're obviously um very attuned to. And it's extremely important to all of us as educators, as parents, as members of the school community. So um, I do want to um read a little section of the the bullying prevention intervention plan because the policy is one thing, and a lot of the things mentioned in the policy kick over to this. This is like a little more detailed process. So a couple of things I think the community would appreciate hearing to know that, like Ms. Benwick said, is um, this is up for review, so the timing is great. Even if it wasn't, we'd likely do it anyways. So um this fall, well, some will be working on putting that team together. But under one of the district priorities, it talks about the bullying prevention and intervention plan is a comprehensive approach to addressing bullying and cyberbullying in the school or district is committed to working with students, staff, families, law enforcement agencies, and the community to prevent issues of violence. So it is a collaborative approach on this. It's not just developed by you or us. So that that will be involvement and availability because I know some community members and parents um have volunteered to be part of that work as well as school committee members. So I wanted to point that part out. Um, also, just to give a little more insight into what that may look like, um, under the leadership section of this plan, under Part A, it says public involvement in developing, developing of the plan. So what this might look like in the fall. As required by MASC law, this plan was developed in um, developed in consultation with district and community stakeholders. Consultation includes notice in a public comment period before the plan is adopted by the school committee. The district will involve representatives from various constituencies and ongoing aspects of the plan, including needs assessment, working groups, task force, and public meetings. So all of the above there will be included. And lastly, um, and not comprehensively, just picking out some things I think would be helpful for the community tonight. Um, assessing uh needs and resources. Uh, this plan serves as a blueprint for enhancing capacity to prevent and respond to issues of bullying within the context of other healthy school climate initiatives. As part of our process, school leaders with input from families, staff, um, assess the adequacy of current programs, review current policies and procedures, um, review available data on bullying and behavioral incidents, and access available resources, including curricula, training programs, and behavior health services. Based on these findings, the district advises or develops policies and procedures as establishes partnerships with community agencies, including law enforcement, to set priorities. Finally, the district will consider the following needs assessments. Surveying students, staff, parents, and guardians on school climate, school safety issues, collecting and analyzing building-specific data on the prevalence of characteristics of bullying. I, uh, example, focusing on identifying vulnerable populations in the hotspots in school buildings, on school runs, or on school buses. So pretty comprehensive, there's surveys, there's community members, there's discussion input on both sides into improving, developing what we expect to keep our kids and staff safe. So I think that, as Laid also talked about, professional development there, resources, all those good things are included in this plan in detail. In looking at our current plan, it's good, but it's not great, so I certainly think we can do better. And it also is, it should be, it should reflect the community's needs and wants. It's very specific to the community. So it ties, as as you said, and it's back to the policy and should be done simultaneously.
Yeah, the other thing is that there's a lot um enshrined in Massachusetts general law related to this. And so the policy is really the place where we're making sure we're compliant with the law. But the, but the bullying prevention and intervention plan is, I think, an opportunity to think about um the user experience of some of these materials. Like, the policy itself is never gonna be the place where, I mean, it's available, people can look at it, they should. But the thing that's more kind of like geared towards users from like the family and student and even staff perspective is this document. And so I think there's the opportunity to have that working group think about that. You know, not only is it, are we in compliance with the law, yes, but also where are these resources housed? How do people find them? How do they use them? Is it, you know, even formatted in a way that invites a person in to understand it? And I think some of that stuff would be really nice to have community input on. Um, I also did find, I really, I don't know why a lot of the stuff on DESI is very outdated. This is from twenty-ten, but it's a checklist of required components for the bullying intervention policies. And it is actually helpful because I do think it can be really hard to wade through some of the longer documents, and this really breaks it down. And I was happy to see, as Bill noted, um, the survey component because I think that's also a really great opportunity to hear from a broader group of families and understand the ways in which our current policies and the implementation of them is and is not working for people. Um, so I think the survey is a great idea, and I'm glad that you brought that up.
And I think Superintendent Burkett and team have done a really great job with other models of this in the district, just with like safety planning in general, and that there's already structure for that that can be used in this, you know, for this bullying and intervention planning, just with other safety planning, that you had teams and structures and they spoke in other, for other means, that this can be kind of like, you know. I mean, I just think that we have, you know, just built some great teams that, you know.
I think the emergency operations team is playing really close resemblance to this.
Yeah, exactly.
We didn't have one, and their policies were average.
Yeah.
That team with, you know, working collaboratively with the community groups and safety officials is just off the charts, and we've seen this presentation. So I think that's a good example, and this could be the same, it should be.
Exactly, yeah, right, that's great. The relationships exist already that.
Correct.
Are so solid that I think it's going to come together. And great, uh, very confident in it.
Just thinking about the liaison positions in the task group, does it make sense for like, say, Maria, she is, a lot of the research to have, and carry beyond that.
Someone from policy.
Because you're on policy.
And just as a, someone, yeah, a crossover. I'd be happy to do it if um if that's.
I think we should let them figure out what the numbers are.
Yeah, that's true. I don't want to overwhelm the group. You have too many, too many school committee people on it, but I agree. That's a thought, yeah.
There are models out there that have like massive groups, and then there are some that are smaller. I think it depends on the size of the district.
Yeah.
But that's where a survey, more focused groups can come in, too. Like, you can still gather input and feedback from a large number of people without necessarily having to group itself.
And then have comment, comment periods.
Very large, the public comment period, definitely.
Exactly. You could always have like, carry the lead in, or you have an alternate, alternate if Carrie's, you know, unable to attend.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, like, if we're looking at the policy...
Yeah, we just want to be working within...
And if it's at the same time, like, just make sure, like, what the working group is working on.
Translates over to policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It follows a lot.
Yeah, I suspect it's going to be a lot of the prevention, like, the meat of it, and just making sure that what we're proposing aligns with how the policy reads.
Yes.
Because I feel like that's the places where we can affect user experience.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
It's good.
Thank you. So, in terms of the timeline for that, we think fall?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Get started. We'll do some of the framework over the summer, obviously.
Yeah.
I thought we were going to talk about a third treaty, too, potentially?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense. Okay.
Sounds like a plan. All right. Superintendent Burkhead, back to you.
Thank you. John, can you help me with the presentation?
Goals, year one of two.
Okay, so as we get to, just to put a refresher for our community and the committee, it's my fifth year at Situate, and I was being evaluated yearly by the school committee in public. And this year, we moved to a, after year three, you were able to move to a two-year format, and this is where we are now. So, this is year one of two. In the fall, I came and shared my goals that were approved by the committee. This is a check-in, report out, get your feedback, and the goals certainly can be flexible, adjusted, whatever we need to do to keep them on track and be successful. Like Mr. Beatty, I'm excited tonight. I think this is a way to celebrate all the great things happening, and to be honest about things we can improve on. The good thing about a two-year plan that I found is that, you know, if you didn't make something, you know, you kind of, you know, what do you do with that hanging piece? You just need a little more time. So, I think we can be more ambitious with our goals than we were, knowing that we've got two years. And then having a check-in like this is a really good way of sharing out what's happening, again, getting some feedback, working with our team to adjust, and so that we ensure that we reach goals, all our goals. Happy to say that we're on target to meet them all. I have strong confidence that we will. So, what I prepared today is a document that I'll include online, because it is a lot of narrative, so I'm not going to read a lot of this tonight, but just for the community members watching, and for those that can't make it tonight, I'll put this on the website. And my goal was to be able to tell the story, kind of like our blue book when we do the budget, and all the things we do is try to make a document that the layperson can pick up, it's not an education, and understand it, understand where we are. So, I think that's what's done here. So, before I start that, I just wanted to give a shout out to the entire Situate Public Schools family, our central office team, principals, district leaders, department chairs, curriculum coordinators, teachers, and all support staff. I want to thank you for all you do. While the work is intense, it is undeniably the most important work in the world, in my opinion. You should be commended for yet another successful year serving our students, families, and community. Your dedication and hard work are clearly reflected in every accomplishment that I'll discuss tonight. So, thank you. Okay, so the executive summary, and I'm going to cover a lot of this in more detail. And I'm just going to read one, first paragraph, to kind of give a little flavor of what this talks about. This is basically an overview of the entire document. Throughout the twenty twenty-four and twenty-five school year, we remain focused on advancing Situate Public Schools strategic plan by supporting every learner through instructional excellence, strengthening systems for continuous improvement, fostering meaningful communication, community engagement, and investing in our people and culture, grounded in equity, collaboration, and continuous improvement. That's the overall flavor. Can we go to the next page? Okay, so as we go on, we have a little summary here. Again, I'll just read a sample of this on the left. It's a message to the school committee. I am pleased to provide the school committee with an update on my progress toward achieving the twenty-fourth through twenty-twenty-six Superintendent Evaluation Goals. These goals align with the Situate Public Schools strategic plan, act as a guiding framework as we work together toward our shared vision of educational excellence. On the right side here, we start with the goals. The first one is provide engaging and rigorous curriculum and deliver high-quality instruction to meet the academic needs of each learner. I think what you'll see tonight throughout this is a thread of some of the school improvement plan conversations that we've had this year, reported out by Dr. Rab and Mr. Lynch, Dr. Bober, our central office team, and department chairs throughout the year of student learning. So, all that stuff, hopefully, we encapsulate in this report. Broke it down into a kind of, we will, these are basically what I said we would do in the fall, so I'm going to kind of gloss over that a little bit. That's kind of a, you know, the promises made. The key actions are things we've been doing, so again, I'll highlight some of those. And then we'll get into some of the processes we did to get there, and then the outcomes are the, obviously, the meat potatoes that we can discuss and how far we've progressed and what we've done. So, what we talked about in this first goal is, you've heard this a lot throughout the year, and it's something we're really proud of, is continue with the MTSS implementation, ensure coherent systems for screening and monitoring student social emotional support, we've heard through our peer analysis, the new math program, six through twelve. We've broadened that out to include a curriculum management plan, which we'll talk about, a new data review process, equity audit, sharing with the staff, and identifying achievement gaps, and addressing them, and also acceleration through our win blocks. So, those are some things you can expect to see. So, the actions we've taken, engage learners in their growth, measure our competencies in SEL and academics, monitor growth, share best practices. I hadn't said that a lot in the past, but we've, as I'll talk about through the new February data meeting that we had, our leadership teams, we strategized them, so now we talk about, for example, a win block. Talked about a win block in an elementary meeting or district leadership meeting. We talked about win block, and then we talked about what each school was doing, and we share ideas, and then what's working, what's best, how can we reflect the best practices in other schools. We hadn't done that before, so that sometimes when you do that, some of those best practices are left unchecked, and some schools are doing things very differently than us, we leave a little consistency in that as well. Next page. Okay, so the process, these are, they're the benchmarks. So, the win schedules we talked about, and best practices, I alluded to a little bit in there. Spent a lot of time talking about how we use win block this year. It was used differently in a lot of places, and what we talked about at the Millan High School, where it didn't necessarily exist or wasn't used to what we wanted it to look like, to align with the MTSS protocols, and to be able to, as Mr. Beatty put it, impact to all students instead of fifty percent. Or, in the Gates example, having kids choose between banned and getting extra help or acceleration, that won't be a problem anymore. So, those are some things that I'll get to in the outcomes to evaluate our peer data. I've heard a lot of feedback in the last few meetings from the committee on peer data, and learned a lot about that, where I think on one, one school we talked about, or the elementary SIPS feedback was that we should focus on some things that are issues, and what's narrowing downwards so big. And hearing tonight the feedback from Mr. Larranger is that, wow, ninety-five percent. My question too, right now, is, okay, where are some things that we are ninety-five percent better, five percent? Maybe we look at those as well. So, these are growth areas for us on that data, so big, narrowing the focus on that and being very specific in attacking that will be a better plan moving forward. So, the outcomes, I think there's been significant progress, and I want to thank, you know, Mr. Lynch and their department chairs, and all their work on the Open Architects, Gate School, Jenkins taking it on this year, a lot of extra work and time. This thing's really good. And then on the win blocks, I think what's significant here is seeing the big picture and seeing how this stuff all integrates. So, for example, Open Architects is really awesome, and you saw some pictures and some presentations, and all the time it takes to go and get data from all these different places, and all the extra work that teachers have to do, and department chairs, and coordinators, principals, and central office, just getting the data is overwhelming. Then when you have the meetings, they're often rushed, and so you need time. So, you need time, you need access, and then you need time and, you know, commitment to make in the plan, and then following through. So, I think that's all. What we did through a couple of different processes, because I think Open Architects on its own, and that dashboard is good, but if you don't have the time to use it, or to implement it, to follow up with it, it's kind of useless. So, I think what you'll see tied into that is our negotiations. Some of those, you know, I thought somebody mentioned tonight, it's not just about money. I think we have excellent contracts and excellent trust built with all our units. But what I'm specifically impressed with was the ability between the teachers' union to hear us on this and say, we need time and collaboration time to work on MTSS processes, and they agree with that. So, you see in this contract that at the high school, for example, on Wednesday mornings, there'll be time now for the administration to have, to work with our staff on MTSS that never existed. So, that's just kind of a through line on, when are you going to do all this? When do you have time? Another part was the elementary staff agreement, that collaboration time was in the teacher's hands. Administration had input, but they didn't necessarily have say. So, the teachers had to give up some authority there, again, all part of negotiations, but for a good cause. Now, we'll have times in those meetings to talk about and learn about each student through the MTSS process. So, just wanted to let you know that not only were we cognizant of having the MTSS work done as a major goal in the district and our strategic plan, but that we had a plan through gaining the time for negotiations and a process for doing that. So, I thought that tied in pretty well. And then the, which I'll get to later on as well, is the new, it's on us here, is the February data review meetings, that also ties in to kind of model, you know, slowing down, looking at our information. This year, you know, credit again goes to Mr. Lynch and our team for coming up with that. It was very powerful. It comes right after the mid-year benchmark, February was chosen, because it becomes after the mid-year benchmarking data comes out, and it's a couple of months right before MCAS on the middle and high school as well. So, it was good timing, and we broke it up between elementary and high school. So, it was really the first time we all got in the room together with department chairs, curriculum coordinators, principals, and the office team, took our time and just slowly went through all the information, and looked for trends, for what's going well, what's not, how are we addressing this, and then coming up with action steps that were implemented right away, that each principal then went back, and at faculty meetings, at ILT meetings, were able to implement these right away. So, I thought, you know, that was really powerful this year, and it can only get better with now adding Open Architect, the dashboard, in those meetings, right? Because those department chairs and coordinators had to go dig up all that data just to hold those meetings. That's going to be a lot easier when we have less wasted time doing that. We have it all at our fingertips. And it includes not just academic, but it includes the social emotional data, the peer data, all in one place, and so we can plan and manage better. It's also smarter, because what typically was done, is you wait till MCAS the year later, then you have these meetings and do all this. The kids are in the next grade, they're all mixed up. So, I think the Curriculum Management Plan, excuse me, the February data review meetings, the Open Architects you see on these outcomes have tied in. We've got work to go, certainly. We have to expand this now to the other elementary schools, to the rest of Jenkins. So, there's a lot of work to go there, but we're committed to it, as is the community. So, thank you. The budget process is there. So, we'll be working on that year round, and excited to work back how that impacts student learning. The equity audit presentation was included in your packet. I'm not going to break out to links, but when people want to dive into this some more, they'll see that. That was really good, just for us to, even though it was a few years back, we have new staff, new people, the district team come up with a really good presentation. It was just good to have conversations. We did that with the entire district, not just the teachers, our professionals, bus drivers, custodians, ministry assistants, everybody. So, I think we're all on the same page on what the expectations were from the audit. We're ready to move into creating the tool, the equity tool, that will help with making equitable decisions in our district. So, that's to come. So, I think that wraps up kind of outcomes on that goal. I'll pause there if there's any, wait to the end, or whenever you're comfortable.
You thought, you thought, what do you prefer?
I'll make a comment. I think it's, it's a lot of work to learn systems while there's also like children, and there's just so many moving parts to this. So, I think it's a lot, I want to recognize the amount of work that goes into all of this, while there's so many moving parts in a school system at once. Like, there's a lot going on at once.
I agree. Takes many hands.
Yes, it's just a lot.
Many people, but you're right.
Yeah.
I guess, for me, it's a yes and.
Yeah.
That there are many moving parts, and it makes it really, it makes it really hard for me to assess the progress that's being made. So, like, when I look at the goal, engaging and rigorous curriculum, high-quality instruction, meet the needs of each learner, and I'm just trying to find, like, if we're progress monitoring, what's the evidence of the goal? I'm kind of surprised that there's no qualitative or quantitative data anywhere, because you mentioned key action, close the equity gap. That's a huge, that's like a huge statement.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering, like, where are you seeing that?
Yeah.
And, yeah, and so, like, and even the peer data, I know we brought it up a couple of times. I'm curious, in relation to your goal, if you see changes in peer data, what are you learning from the data that would inform how you're feeling about that learning goal? So, yeah, so I think I appreciate the work, Nicole, you're mentioning. I just think it makes it really hard to, to find the outcomes for the goals that you're setting.
Yeah, and back at my goals, I'll pull that now, because when these were approved by the school committee, how will we know progress is being made on that first goal? So, for the first one, June twenty twenty-five, evaluate, implement an effective MTSS process and examine data related to student interventions and outcomes, that's twenty-five, twenty-six. Improve percentage. So, a lot of these in this one were twenty-five, twenty-six, so I think we have another year. So, I think, our goal was, on this first part of it, and I think that was explained in the fall, was that we're trying to get all these things in place, you know, and then, of course, we need to look at that data. Next year, I should have that, and that's very, you know, clear expectation, I think we should expect.
So, when I look at key actions on this presentation, these are mostly ongoing?
Two years, yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what, well, that's what I'm just trying to figure out. Okay.
One thing I've been thinking a lot about is the SEL competencies. I think, I've just been noodling on this, because we talked about this a little bit, how we have our Director of Guidance overseas currently, all the college prep stuff, and also all the sort of guidance, counseling, SEL. It's a really big bucket. And so, I think when she presented to us, we got a little taste of some of the SEL stuff that's going on. But to me, that's an area that would be great to understand a bit more as, as you're, from all angles, whether it's here, whether it's, you know, in that presentation next year, or wherever it might come out. I just think that, to me, is one of the things that's least clear. And I think, you know, if we're talking about measuring and improving those competencies, I feel like that's an area that we could stand to get a little more specific on.
On the peer data?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we've, we reference it, we see every now and then a peer data point or... Yeah, I think we've, we, we reference it, we see every now and then a pair data point or maybe a couple. But I don't know that I have a good sense of the holistic, you know, what the tool is telling us holistically about our students. And therefore, you know, what are we doing about that? I think that's hard to tell.
Can I ask you, throw it back to you a question, I'm going to talk to Makowski because I'm taking notes here. What specifically would you like to see?
Well, I, what I'm trying to discern is I understand that this is a two-year process, but I'm just thinking like in the key action where it says inform staff and close equity gaps. I'm just curious, like, that just feels like a really big statement to say close equity gap. So is that happening now? Are you seeing a, a reduction in the gap? And if so, where um, you know, are you progress monitoring that? What does that look like? Have you closed the gap in some areas? Those are things. That's all. It's just, just discerning from year to year.
I think the pair data too, like that's I think that like a really long time ago,
Greg Renee came.
Greg did like a pair overview, like that might be something interesting.
And then we even had someone, didn't someone from the company come at some point? Kind of somewhere in somewhere came.
I think they came to Hatterley, Hatterley's.
School council maybe? I don't know. I feel like someone came and gave us.
And Greg brought somebody from the company last year. He's come every year.
Yeah. He does come every year. He can never come enough. I think, yeah, I don't know. Something about that is always interesting. I think, I think it's just interesting. Parents find it interesting and. Maybe it's a good beginning of the year thing, like it's like social emotional bullying and.
Now that we're doing it twice, it's in the morning.
Yeah, like the pre, the post, the I think the year over year trends. We always have new parents coming in, you know, a good learning and kind of um, intro presentation even just to like um, with um, gosh, I know I even haven't pulled up on my own computer. What's it called?
You'd have to block up an hour though.
You are not wrong. That's that file time pulled up on my computer. Um, somebody help me out. What's the social emotional?
Come on, HSA.
Um, no, the curriculum, um, character strengths.
Oh, character strengths.
Like, I don't know. Those are things parents like to know about. Little overviews of like what. Yeah, but I think if you go up pair and
I think just as a bundle.
Bundle.
As a bundle on pair, yes. But also as a bundle back to, back to our this presentation at hand, I think as a bundle, we're just looking for um, anything more specific, like with, get our teeth into it on any of these. Um, and I know that, that some of that is, is coming, but it's, we are still measuring this as we go. So it's kind of like, even if those measurements are coming at the end of next school year, there are measure, there are benchmarks along the way. And so knowing where we are on that, uh, I think would be, would be helpful.
This might even tie to something you said Maria too, about like some of the binder.
Oh, yes.
Pieces on like the data. I think we have it, we just aren't seeing it right in this moment of like,
Together. Oh, that's cute.
We have the pair pre-imposed. I think it exists, the progress.
Mm-hmm. It also will really help honestly, having our stuff in Google Drive um, in terms of making things searchable for us to go back. Cause I even thought that, um, I wanted to go back Bill and find your presentations from the fall.
Yeah.
And I was like, what month is that? And I'm deep in the folder, in the X drive.
That's the new stuff.
Great. Love it. Very happy with Google. Thank you. Yeah.
Right, the next one is um, strength, strength in communication to build support and collaboration among school, district and town partners. So this was more um, to do with communications and new school project, uh, continue the MSBA process.
Yeah, we skipped one.
Go back.
District improvement goal one.
Oh, boy. Bill, where did you find this fancy thing?
He's on. He just showed it. He just gave an advertisement for it.
I've never even heard of it.
Yeah, we can keep going.
Give me two minutes and I'll be there. Just bring a copy as a backup. So improve the functionality outcomes of the district wide teams. So this was the uh, school councils and school improvement plans. Part of the goal was to create consistent processes for school councils. They were a little, you know, they weren't up to spec with public meeting laws and those types of things. Update revised the school improvement plan template. Again, wasn't great. Then aligned the school improvement plan with school committee policy and expectations. The other one. So key actions, we had several meetings to go over this. We had trainings on public um, meetings. How to pick a school council, uh, to run those meetings. I think that is where we put a lot of our emphasis this year in time. Obviously have improvements to make on some of the content in those. I'll get to those next page. Page eight. Page eight, okay. I know. Yeah, that's it. Okay. Alright, so process. Wanted to ensure the meeting laws were, uh, we're calling the open meeting law. Genus membership, um, to me is was prescribed to use in DSI guidelines. We align with that. We got that all done. And the outcomes where we created guidelines and expectations, consistency, um, after meeting with principals, trainings. And meetings will run consistently and uh, with all the expectations of a public meeting. Thing that we uh, are going to improve on and work on this year and I've got, and you know, thanks to the committee for giving me clear expectations and feedback on that. I know we got a follow-up meeting with a couple of you too that shared some resources and expectations. So that was my question. I think there's a lot of questions. Alright, we've gotten this far. What do you recommend on what we can do to do better? So I think that was well taken. So that's the goal for next year on part two of this. We've got the template, got the meetings running well. And now the actual product, the end product we want to see. So I think that can be an expectation for next year. That's why I added that line, align with the school committee policy. Except policy's done very well. We spent time on that recently, updated it, but also the expectations and what to look for. Using data to tell a story, but also to have, you know, focus goals that really move the district forward.
Oh, you added a line with school.
Yeah. So I'll be on.
Are we doing feedback now?
Yes.
I was, so I, I think you definitely, the template is so much better. I mean, I think we told all the principals that to be the case. It was so much easier just to follow. I think the one thing if I could offer a suggestion in the process, and I don't know if it's possible with our schedule, but I have to say I hate that we show up at this meeting and it's, even though we've prepped, it's the first time we're talking to the principals about these SIPS. And I cannot stand feeling like the bad guy in this. I, I, I want them to feel supported and that we're being curious and asking questions. So I wonder if it's possible and still honor open meeting laws to have like a almost like, you know how we do the policy stuff? So like we bring a policy, we discuss it and then we do some, because I just think it's unfair. We just, we don't set them up for success. When they come to us and we're only seeing it for the first time. I think some of that will change because we're doing our homework around data. We're trying to get better prepared. So some of our questions, but I always feel like we're not setting it up for success and it, it becomes um, adversarial almost.
I don't want anyone, this is like a personal problem. I hate when people don't like me. It's like, why? I should be in therapy.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not even that. I just think if, if I had had, if, if I had had one conversation, well, I don't think it's for you.
Like seriously.
For me, it's not that though.
It keeps me up at night.
If we had had one preliminary conversation with the principals and, and whomever they're represented, I think some of that conversation that we had would have disappeared, right? With just a couple of questions. And I don't know, I, that's for, you know, you have to think about it, but if there's some way.
Our policy just says that we review. Our policy says we review. It doesn't say we publicly review. It doesn't say we publicly give feedback or vote. I think that there is wiggle room in different word, to interpret it in different ways. I actually do not think we need to do that. I think we could do uh, whether it's a preliminary round of feedback.
And I think we should honor, like, kind of like what we do with you, Bill, which is
Compile.
We compile the feedback and one, we give you one document so that we're not bombarding, so that we do the same thing. We all have a chance to get feedback. We compile it and one person reaches out.
I don't want to feel like judge and jury, like.
No, it's just questions. And so then when they come and present the final-ish thing, it's, it's a different conversation and potentially more fruitful.
Right. I agree. I mean, to me, the policy reads like an opportunity for that casual.
It also like, you know, it's more collect up for body. You know, to, to collect our thoughts, like we don't have a lot of time right now.
No, and I don't want them to dread coming to school.
No.
June is a very busy month, like.
Yeah. So anyway, just something to think about.
We're doing that work anyway, taking the notes and all that stuff, but we don't have the opportunity to talk to each other at that time. So we also don't know what our colleague's gonna wonder or say and we, and we don't have that opportunity either. So it's also just the setup is not, not, not helpful. No.
Well, I appreciate that feedback. I think it's something we want to resolve. We all are on the same team. We want this to, these to be great. But it's good to hear your perspective that, just getting the week in before you, if you dive in all in, there's no opportunity. And so, thank you. Yeah, we'll look into that. I think there's a great opportunity there because I think that, you know, we all want that, principals want that, we want that.
Yeah.
You know, now, you know, even thinking about even tonight's process. You know, when it's, when it's a one-year one, I always got these out a couple of weeks in advance, got, got feedback. I do a self-assessment, so. This, this feels weird too. It's just very different. Right. I usually get preliminary feedback.
Now you're like, what are they gonna say?
It's just, it's new.
I slept right night's sleep last night.
But even this, I'll, I'll learn it year one, you know, next time it'll be like, there's, there's no rules on that. I can get it three weeks in advance and get written feedback, like you said, so.
I just think we could be more helpful. Because like, I think I could ask better questions if I had more conversations. That's all.
Time. Yeah.
I mean, I think the well-intendedness of this two-years thing was like, everyone last year were like, yeah, that's such a good idea. Two years is much more runway for like, working on things long-term. And now like, okay.
Can I just say one more thing about the, about this one? Sorry. Um, just actually two, two quick things. One is just, we are still driving towards this three-year goal-setting process too.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
And, yeah, and I just, I say that not because it's in the policy, which it is, but it, because there's a reason behind it, which is that we don't want people to feel like they're getting a whiplash every year. I'm focusing on this and I'm focusing on this. You know, we want people to actually feel like they have time to focus. Um, and then the other comment is just to me, when I read this, it still is very compliance oriented to me. And I feel like there's room to infuse some thoughts about why these matter, more than just the paper they're written on. You know, that, that idea of like, why are we doing all of this in the first place? It's not just about, are we checking boxes? Are we complying with open meeting? Are we complying? This is very compliance oriented to me. And I just think, Bill, you in particular, given your role, have an opportunity to really set the tone around goal-setting and why we do it. And I hope that it is more than just an exercise in something that we have to do anyway. And there is research around the importance of when it's done well, it can actually lead to the outcomes that we want. And that's what we're ultimately going for. So.
My only piggyback on that is like, I'm a big fan of, like, to, to that end, the school council's meeting more regularly. I know that people are busy and it's hard, but in order for that to happen, they almost have to meet more than quarterly.
But the policy says a minimum quarterly, I think. Right?
I just like, I get it.
That was a was a point of contention in the, in the policy.
I know.
That committee a couple of years ago when we did that um, policy, but we set it as a minimum. But yes, I'd agree. In order to really do this well, you can't just meet four times a year.
District improvement goal two. Start the communication to build support and collaboration among school, district and town partners. Communication thread here was through the building process with, new building process with the upcoming enrollment plan. Formerly redistricting plan. It's called enrollment plan now. And then to get families as partners to be involved. So a lot of this legwork this year for this one was um, done on the front end by central office. A lot of this, the, the actuals will happen next year. So basically the, I'll share with you the timeline. That's, I think we linked it on the outcomes. We go to the next one, Tom. So process was to gather, is to gather input from stakeholders, hold informational meetings. We had one this year at the beginning of the year. It was more to give them what I'm going to tell you tonight. I think it did put people at ease to let them know that we had time, A, but then with some specifics. That we're going to have, working with a partner that does this for a living in a geographical study, a very complex and comprehensive one. That will have a timeline, which I provided with you tonight. Starts, uh, it's already started with us meeting with this individual and the company getting them their data. They also thought or know that um, the, the more enrollment information closer to the time of the building opening, which would be next October, not last October, would be useless. So that we really couldn't start these meetings before uh, this year, coming out, the upcoming year. So that was the in-person meeting we had this year. Follow-up correspondence. I think people were in a good place with that. And so what now, where do we go from here? Is we have, you know, pretty comprehensive practice and I'm, I'm just going to read out some of the things. So data collection is happening now. It'll go through October and all through next year to kind of analyze the entire district, the amount of spots we have in each school, the space, the space, the new school, et cetera. New kids coming into the building. And then um, they'll do it, uh, and that will be all through September and October. Then the data assimilation. Which they do is they, you know, they, they plot everything on a grid. And then the internal planning, there'll be an internal planning team that will work and just talk about those numbers, the geography, the buses, all those things that play a role. And so the timeline shakes out to, just to give folks a, an understanding, September eleventh will be the first internal planning team meeting. Start talking about getting ready for this. October second, there'll be um, be the second meeting. October sixteenth of next year, for your calendars, it will be the first public meeting. So that we're hitting the ground pretty early. Um, that will be a webinar. It will be open to the entire community. Right after that, it'll be a website set up, a separate website that'll be linked to our website that the proper company that we're working with, uh, we've got a mock-up of it. It's pretty impressive. It gives you all the information you can imagine. You could click on where your house is. What school you would be going to or recommended to with a Y and all that kind of information. It's very informative. Gives our goals for the process. It gives information. Also we'll be doing a survey. So there'll be a survey going out at that time. Be collecting all that information. And people will be uh, in the know. They'll have an opportunity to speak about it. They'll have an opportunity to survey about it. It'll be a very inclusive process. And then after that October meeting, there'll be follow-up um, internal group meetings. After getting the feedback from the surveys, the public meeting, all that kind of information, the initial plot lines. We'll start covering out a plan. And then they'll, on December third, there'll be the second public meeting where the initial plan will be laid out. Pretty aggressive timeline, but done smartly with these folks. Then feedback added from that plan, a final plan developed, another internal planning meeting, uh, December eighteenth. And at the January, um, school committee meeting, we'll share the plan for feedback, input, committee. And like a first reading. And then in February, the goal is to get a vote by the committee on, this is our rolling plan. I think it times up really well. It's almost eighteen months prior to when the new school opens so that folks can plan accordingly. We can get bus routes simulated and we'll know class sizes, where kids are going to school. So I think that's far enough out where we can, you know, let the dust settle, let people. So I think that's far enough out where we can, you know, let the dust settle, let people get used to that, make plans, gather any more feedback, and work out any unique or individualized situations. So, that's very specific on that. I did wanna spend time, because it was kind of a dual public announcement on where that is. And that was a big part of that. Goal included, um, communications in there as well, um, so don't wanna overshadow that. But a big part of our goal as a district was our communications, and how we do it. So we did a comprehensive, this is part two of this goal, uh, communications audit with Perry Group. Outside group basically to come in, looked at focus groups, input, talked to parents, talked to staff, uh, excuse me, not staff, principals, couple of, I think maybe one or two school members. So, um, and just, uh, our tech team, obviously, and then just looked at all the things we were doing. You have that entire report, they've given us some findings and recommendations. Guess there was a hundred last time, just by the weight, but it was, it was only sixty-four pages. But the recommendations are the goal in the back, and that's kinda, you know, you can read that too, but just, I think the next step of the plan. You know, some of the things, just for the community to know, for you to know, that we found out is that's, you know, the main, problem we were having is School Bundle, our, our, our vehicle for using our communications. Although what has a, what attracted us to it was it has a good website, uh, map, which is decent, and appreciated by most people, uh, and the app is, is pretty good, getting information out there. Everything else is not good. And it was actually, you know, it took us this, to get this feedback, to realize that that was a big kind of, um, obstacle in how we got information out. For example, if we sent an email blast from the district, it doesn't come out, Central Public Schools, or we can't control where it says, it comes out at Norplay, one of those, it's very impersonal. You know, that was one of the feedbacks, they couldn't fix that. Lot of things were getting bounced and people weren't getting, um, principals and the tech team had to jump through hoops to get, get things out, so just, well, going on. I've, the good news is the contract ends June 30th, I've already been in touch with them. We may keep the website, because I think dismantling a website and creating a new one is not a good idea, it's from scratch, where that's their strength. But looking at other, um, communications, um, platforms is what we've already been working on. And, uh, reaching out to other, other districts, and we've kinda, I've taken a, kind of, survey there, and Ryan's looking there. Tech team is looking on, with the tech people are saying, we're narrowing it down to a couple. So we're gonna look at a few platforms, communication platforms that could be better, right away.
Really?
For the fall.
No way.
Why?
That's exciting.
Oh, it's, no, it's.
Just like, stop it! I mean, I read all sixty-seven pages, and at the end I was like, okay, Nicole. So, okay, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay, we got this.
No, I.
Cause I know, I understand how like, you know, that's a big deal to shift like that, it takes time, you gotta be patient, it's a big, big district.
Yeah, it is.
And I understood the recommendations to like, make it work for the year. You, I, I heard that Perry Group loud and clear, we're gonna make this work for the year, we're gonna do this, we're gonna rally.
And if you read deeper into that, there was a lot more workarounds and work.
Made my day.
So.
I'm gonna still hold tight though, I'm gonna.
Hold tight, there's still, I, I think there's a lot of good news in this.
I'm like, I was like, just getting too excited.
There's a lot of good news in this because, I think it's, um, not a lot, it was a surprise, but the how, like, how do we fix it? Or the details.
I think I could carry a group report in one word, or like, one page. You could've sent just one, one page that said, get rid of this.
Well, I think the other things, like, simply, um, people wanna, wanna read something in the body of their email.
Yes, yes, indeed.
And even my Thursday, even my Thursday thoughts, School Bundle wouldn't allow that, they had to link it to our website. And then when you got to the website, you had to go down and click a PDF, you couldn't even come to the page. I even was frustrated with that. So I, we just didn't, when we called them, there was just, they couldn't fix it, we just had to live with it. And that's kinda how we move forward.
Yeah.
In the, and probably the things I should've started with, was they, they don't have analytics.
Right.
Like, we can't tell how many people are reading the words they thought, so we can't tell, I mean, Smore, Canvo, all those little ones have this.
They have analytics.
So it's, it's, it's kind of embarrassing. So, you know, that's, that's something we'd like to have, and I think, all this accountable, I think one of the goals for next year, what I like what they put in there too, is, you know, I'm working on personally, as principal, superintendent now.
The superintendent.
Superintendent is, you know.
Sorry, you're superintendent.
You know, having specific goals around the data and what I wanna achieve. So they, they put in there, for example, are forty percent of your, of your items getting opened? If they're not, you shouldn't be doing it.
Right, a hundred percent.
So, we don't even know on some of that.
But forty percent is actually, like, that's real.
It's really good, yeah, so that's what the professionals say. And so we'll have some like, you know, really strategic goals and objectives to, to go by, but we already have some low-hanging fruit that we're working on. Like, the principals were frustrated, they couldn't get stuff out in timely manner.
Yeah, like, they had said.
Our, our digital comms teams who were there to kinda proof everything and do everything, and to work around School Bundle, were getting frustrated because a lot of work was coming their way, they don't wanna do that. So I think it's gonna be good news for everybody to kinda go back to some basics, you know, the body. And then coming back from, from families and, and folks about what they find is important. Is, you know, we were sharing some stuff that they were just getting overwhelmed with, it was too much, it was coming from different directions. We're gonna kinda, and we'll start this over the summer, already started it, is to kinda streamline some of that, simplifying some of it, and going back to some basics. Then with this new communications platform, we'll be able to do that smoothly, quickly, and have some information on, and how many people are actually opening these things, spending time on it, getting feedback. And there's other recommendations in there, but, um, we are already, we are already diving into this, assessing and evaluating it. Would welcome your feedback on it too, what you think is important and what we should prioritize. But I think it's really gold, mine, a treasure trove of good information, and for, I think it's well worth it. Some actions steps we can, we can definitely easily take and have this thing turn around within the year.
I think the PTO and principal feedback was really, just, they were really well put in there. The way they delivered their messages to the Perry Group was just nicely put, so, constructive.
Oh, I appreciated the trust, you know, trusting that people have the psychological safety to share that, like, hey, this isn't working. Or, you know, great, so yeah, there was a lot of honesty there and good feedback, and without that, this wouldn't happen. So I think that's, that was very helpful, yeah.
Well, and I'm impressed that you all are boldly moving forward with all the other things going on, that you're taking the steps too.
Yeah, this is a, we know this is most important to many people, just like, you could be doing great things, but if you don't know how to talk about it, or tell people about it, or you're, the people, we heard one, you heard some anecdotal stuff from the parents that, you know, just stopped checking it because it was just too much, or it was, you know, I just wanted a school menu, or something like that. So, you know, we have to get back to simplifying things, but, so that's that. And, and I think like any other plan, eventually we'd like to get to like a three-year plan. Vision out, right now, what we're gonna do is take low-hanging fruit, have a plan for this year, and then look to go after next year, a three-year plan. So it'll be, okay, this is what excellent educational communication looks like. This is what we can get done now, for example, a social media page, we're not ready for that. We can't even, you know, handle all this with the people we have, so that might be a year or two down the road, but we know it's important. So, those are some examples of things we can put in our three-to-five-year plan. Okay, um, next one is a succession plan to grow the next generation of teacher leaders, also administrators, I'd include in that. So, there's been a lot of talk with our, our staff about, you know, how do we, I know we've had this conversations here, how do we, you know, create, keep the leadership pipeline going here, and make this a unique place to be, make it a place that people wanna come and stay. And one of those things was, okay, can we get some coaching for our teachers? We have it for, you know, administrators at central office, but can we get it for more folks? So we, that was our goal, was to try that, to build capacity, to build leadership, to build culture. And so I think we were successful at piloting this, I think we still have questions from this. Key actions were, um, well, the other part of this was negotiations, because of the culture of support for teachers and administrators, so. Under the key actions, we negotiated six contracts, five were voted on tonight, so five out of six will be going home with contracts before school year ends. I think it's extremely impressive, the, the culture of, of contract negotiations going on right now. Expanding search resources is another way to implement, keep great staff. Equitable search processes are also another example. Next one, Tom. Okay, so the outcomes for this were, uh, completed negotiations successfully with five unions. We've made significant progress, or I'd made it down to this little bit with Leadership Coaching Pilot. We implemented it, we got feedback, we've had three teachers, very small sample size. They all enjoyed it, I think, they thought it was helpful. I don't know if we could continue that individually, um, and afford to do it en masse with all coaches. We're gonna have to kinda continue looking at this, but we do have free people that have gone through it that can offer us feedback. Uh, some progress on expanding search researchers, uh, including Teacher Lounge, NEMNet, and MPDE. Sorry, I didn't spell these out, but these are, um, you know, sites that we typically don't post jobs to, to expand our ability to get a more inclusive, wide-ranging application pool. Uh, the next step we'll need to take is, are those people actually applying on these? And get some numbers there, and share those with you. And then the next one is a training document for our hiring committees, which is, um, you know, our committees now, we've spent more time on who's on those committees, is it well represented? Mr. Adams then spooked or talked to those committees about process. We shared ten steps that we use just to kinda get that ball rolling, it's new, and about, just to keep consistency on how we interview, and look for people, and, you know, check our biases at the door if we can, just being, people being acknowledged of all that. I think it's a good first step, how we hire people. So that's the goals, I'll pause on that one. Okay, the next thing is, this is more for the committee, uh, but also for the community to know that, um, superintendent's evaluated on four standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, which you've seen throughout, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Next slide. These next few slides are just examples, like I said, if people are reading this and don't necessarily know what these are, they're just examples, they're guides. Examples on the evaluation focus indicators, talks about the superintendent, which I did pick six to eight every year to kinda focus on, because there's a lot of them. The next page, I, on standard one instructional leadership, I tried to tie these all back to the work that I just shared on the goals. And so, and I appreciate the feedback on things we could do to improve this, the curriculum piece. You know, I think another, uh, big undertaking this year that was very successful was the curriculum management plan. Again, uh, great job, Mr. Lynch and the team, and all of us kinda saying that we needed this, and we needed some, you know, we're spending a lot of money, and this ties in with the budget, we're spending a lot of money and committed to our curriculum, um, plan. And we didn't want people to be, to misinterpret that as just textbooks, just providing books. What is all this, and, and we also wanted to make sure we, we were getting a money's worth, that we're investing, uh, and that it was impacting students. So this curriculum management plan, uh, will do that, we've now got something in writing. We've got, also got, as you saw, when Mr. Lynch presented this, we have, um, our departments lined up, so it's organized, it's in a timely manner. It's a, uh, specific process, so we're gonna go through that. And, you can, example I can give, most recently is this year we've had the math curriculum, I know we've been talking about it. So, kind of, as that is being implemented, we had a, an outside, professional come in as an outside set of eyes, and go into classrooms, and back to what Dr. Kocia talked about before, that we gotta do a better job, is talk about pedagogy, look at what's being taught in the classroom. And, you know, we're in there all the time, but getting an outside person to come in and focusing on each discipline as we implement the curriculums to start. Had spoke to teachers, had focus groups, talking about the curriculum, teaching, learning, students, the new, uh, the new curriculum. All those things were discussed, and basically an, an audit or an ease assessment from an outside source. And I think we're getting the feedback in a couple of days, on the 18th, so we'll get the strengths, areas of growth back from that, um, old little mini-study. I think another strength of that too is that, and something we're proud of, is that the staff was open to that, acceptable. Wasn't, I don't want anyone looking at, you know, and I think that's a cultural shift where people are now welcome to that, because we're doing it at central office, we're doing what these February data meeting, is that we all gotta start just talking about the stuff, and how we can, you know, do better, what's going well, what are some things we can improve? And let's just be honest about what we're, what we're seeing and hearing. It's even more powerful, I think, when you have someone from the outside, uh, in this particular case, come in. And then, so this is our first go with this, we'll share that, how that went with you, obviously, but we're looking forward to that conversation. But again, that's part of the whole monitoring process on, okay, how are we doing, are we using this how it's supposed to? Are we advancing with teaching practices as they evolve? And is the curriculum meeting our students' needs? Now are we doing it with fidelity? So it goes back to goal one there, where, you know, that curriculum, um, instruction piece ties back into that, so. Got some, a few other things in there too, but I think that all ties in with, uh, it ties into our wind block. Where now that we've, uh, are using MTSS, we have the, um, dashboard. Now we're going to actually be able to have time to work with kids in different settings, and use that wind time more specifically and more focused. The instructional leadership time, the Wednesday mornings at the high school, and wind block at the middle school are all gonna be changed pretty dramatically with that time. So, it's all interconnected, I think. Keep moving through these, these are goals. The next one, um, management and operations. This talks, again, some of this is repetitive, talks about managing expenditures, and, um, Cushing Hadley School, um, is an obvious one, the fiscally responsible agreement with five unions is another one. And then the budget book, something I think I don't, you know, give our team enough credit for, and I wanna thank, you know, Dr. Rav, and, you know, all the teams for putting this together. He fin, he puts the final book together, but it's just a, I don't see it everywhere, I've asked around for it. It's not something you walk into a town meeting and you get, or you get before. There are some slides and things, but I think this budget book tells a good story. I think it, uh, a person that is not an educator can read it, we've got a lot of good feedback on it. So, I think I wanted to mention that, I think this year was with a lot of, um, overrides and, uh, stress on budgets, stress on contract negotiations from those budgets, get all interconnected, um, everything costs money. Very proud of the fact that for five years now, we've, we've carried a successful budget, um, within our means. And we're able to meet all of our, um, you know, all of our asks as far as, you know, when you give the principals and our, and our staff, too. I'm gonna, I'll give you an example of the principals, they were told to tighten their belts, that's all they heard this year. But we weren't gonna sacrifice curriculum or staff, so people business, eighty percent of the budget's people. We have made no cuts in five years. Again, very proud of that fact, and we, even next year where it looks even tighter, that's our goal. And I think to give credit to our, our teachers and our other unions, they heard that loud and clear too, and I think they heard it through the last cycle. They're thinking ahead and they're saying, hey, we're gonna be reasonable on our requests for anything that's cost monetarily. So that, you know, we keep all of our people. So I wanna give our whole, you know, staff credit for understanding that through the budget process, because we didn't get any unreasonable requests or financial asks, where sometimes out there you hear these crazy things. They were, you know, they were pretty rational, they were good. So again, just very proud of that fact, and proud of them. Next one's family and community engagement. We talked about this, I think, um, with some of the upcoming things we talked about tonight, we can do better at the survey piece. We haven't done a survey in a while, I think we were survey saturated with the new building and COVID and all that, and then we've taken a year or so off. But now, maybe the bullying work we're going to be doing, um, there'll be some opportunities for interviewing surveys there, including our students. I think that's a good opportunity, with the new enrollment plan, there'll be definitely some surveying going on there. So I think, just intertwined in what we're doing in the future and our goals, we'll be able to do that surveying, and talks about that a little bit in here. And as you just reiterated, the new school enrollment plan with the timeline, talks about that in here. Even something as simple that we learned from, I learned from the community audit about the, um, the Thursday Thoughts, is that people weren't feeling my personality, and it was a little dry, I'm a little top, and, and quite honestly, that was my goal, to be a little drier, a little more information-oriented. People are kind of bored with that now, we, we don't want that. We saw, that was cool to, to hear that. You don't get that unless you survey or ask people. So again, I'm excited for a new Thursday Thoughts look.
I know.
Stay tuned, that's how.
That's gonna be an interesting one.
Like, like each time this year, I'll be thinking about that, and just how that could be awesome. So, again, that's just little insights into how we can communicate better with our families. And just by listening to them, but make it more interesting, and make it more, um, of what they want, what they need. The last one is professional culture, one of my favorites. I think every foundation of any great school district, business, community, anything is, is, uh, culture. And it's the way you do things. I think it just continues to get stronger here. I think it just continues to get stronger here, we gave, I gave a lot of examples tonight, I think, that we have a strong culture. I just wanna give two more that were evidenced tonight in our presentation by our two principals. Both made monumental changes in their schedules to accommodate the wind block, to allow MTSS to work, to allow kids to get more help, it's more acceleration and to meet their needs better. And in our contract, it says those schedule changes can't happen without, without being impact bargaining. And we didn't even get there because of the way the principals so professionally handled their staff and knew their staff and worked with their staff and collaborated. They took trips to places, they met with them, it was all year long and intensive work. And that's why I want to share that with you because I'm so, that these cultures aren't built overnight. And those two principals worked on that. When the votes came out, they were both very nervous, as was I, because you don't know. Change is so hard, these are big changes. And Mr. Pete changed it, major, major changes to get to this. Things had to be sacrificed when you do that. And for the teachers, they had to take some sacrifice to see the bigger pictures. But they both got their messages across. Both, by the way, had votes by the, by the membership and both passed overwhelmingly, wasn't even close. I can remember talking to Mark before his vote, he was very nervous, like he just didn't, he had never feel. He thought it was going well, but didn't want to get too overconfident. And it was his last Friday, so like I'm here going for the school committee, go, I won't brag about you on Friday, on Monday, so you better get this passed. And he had, they both had Plan Bs, if not, it just would have been hard. But I just wanna give those as two stories or examples of concrete ways in which our staff and our administrators are working together, listening to each other, and doing things purposefully to get major changes. And so this might go across to some people as Mr. Pete's presentation tonight was, oh, we changed our, you know, our MSAA, our schedule to MST, MTSS model. Or Mr. Lynch is saying, oh, our Wednesdays changed slightly. Those are monumental changes because change is hard and to get those in the schedule, it's in the contract. Didn't even come to the negotiation table, and I give the teachers credit as well for supporting it. I saw a few at the lacrosse game this weekend that I sit with Mark, a couple came by and that's what they talked about. And that's really cooled me that, hey, aren't you glad that, that passed? But, you know, what was it, maxed it over 75, 80%. And so they were like, ah, just excitement about it. So I think when we get excited about that, I think we're all excited about helping kids, that's the goal. So that's my two cents on culture, so I think we're moving in a good direction there. The coaching is on here too, because I want to continue on that. I think we're one of the few school districts that have tried that and want to continue that to help our teachers with coaching. But also we do that with our administrators. The MSA, the Principal Association has started a new program on coaching. Two years ago, we jumped right on it, probably one of the best things we've done. The principals have tough jobs and when they get in crisis or deal with things, they have another voice to go to outside, the person evaluating them. So it's just another support. I included in your document the feedback that each of you had. I know it benefited me and Orion's using it and benefiting from it. So I just think it's something that we're proud of here. Again, one more thing I think we're doing to attract and keep the best people. So I want to thank you all for that support. The last page.
On that one, I just wanted to note, you could add also the collaborative time that you've all been able to carve out on PD days for teachers. And that's something that we've heard rave reviews about from them. And that's another thing that really, I think, builds professional culture and speaks to the sharing of best practices.
Yeah, great point. Yeah, I think the collaborative time was.
Something to dumb down.
Yeah.
For the future, yeah.
There's a lot of this, those contracts, by the way. We could speak online, we did an executive session for two hours, but it's just awesome. And I, well, I wanna, well, I'm there because I wanna, again, share this, I know I've got, we're going three, we're averaging three and a half hours there. You know, anyway, so I might as well. I'm just so unhappy about this. I think I've shared this in executive session, but I want the community to know because I think it's the end of the year, everyone's tired, exhausted, you know, making their summer plans, it's an exciting time, but it's a reflective time.
The only ones on are the Kates anyway.
What's that?
The only ones on are the Kates anyway.
Oh, okay, Kates, this is to you. Kate squared.
This is also the Kate.
There are, yeah.
Generally.
Well, I need a template just to email the union because it's, it's two Kates in a tower, so. I always put Kate squared to make it shorter, but they've been wonderful, I think, you know. But it's all our negotiating team, I think they all were good. But yeah, interest-based bargaining approach that we use, which is extremely rare in Massachusetts, hardly ever used. It's risky, you don't get a group of people on the table, it could go sideways, just like anything else. But I just think our, both the administration, the school committee, committing to that process, taking risks, beating on that part of that, it's a lot more time, takes a lot more time. But I think what's even more important in that contract is the trust built within that room that now permeates out into the district. Because at the last meeting, we all ran around and the facilitator asked, you know, honestly, how did this go? And to a person, it was all extremely positive. The MTA rep, who we're having a lot of respect for, who, you know, who's a great negotiator and a great rep for our union from the MTA, and you don't always hear that. So as a superintendent, I want to share that, good news. Elise, throw her a shout out, she was excellent throughout the process. She got emotional in a positive way and just said how this was the best one she's dealt with, she deals with a lot of that process. The facilitator also mimicked that by saying this was the best one, and she does a lot of them, she's a former MTA rep as well. Well, just a shout out to everybody that was part of that process, to our community and to our negotiating team and to all of our teachers for, you know, they have to ratify this. So they all got together and they ratified it. So all, all five and all six unions, because our, our six unions is working hard, there's two and close, we'll be there, no problem, no worry about that. But those are, those could be very contentious times when you're negotiating contracts. We started out with a group statement, I think we should end with one just before I forget. Now that's been approved, probably whoever the officers were, I think it was, maybe Nicole. Maybe Mr. Phil can maybe get together with Kate squared and Tara, because in public the statement that it's over officially tonight, so.
We'll do it. Sounds good.
I think I said enough of the closing statements there for people to read. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Fantastic. All right. Thank you Superintendent Burkett. Anyone else? Anything? Okay. The updates and the goals, I'm pretty happy.
The data committee update first?
Data committee update, okay.
Just a quick, quick.
What?
I'll do something quick.
Oh, very quick. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see your emails today. I'm sorry that I got to you all so late, but Carrie and I didn't meet until Friday and then things got busy. But there were three things in it. So we owe, we said as a data set committee, we were gonna offer two resources by June. So here we are, offering those. So the first one was what we are referring to as an assessment cheat sheet. So we've talked about this before. This is like a mock-up, I guess, for MCAS. And there are three columns, it has kind of the basics of the assessment. In the first column, the types of data generated, in the middle column. And then the final column is examples of questions this can answer for us. And so what we are hoping to do is make these for some of the big assessments that, you know, the district is offering so that we, as a team, as a school committee team, can approach those presentations with a baseline of knowledge about the assessment that will hopefully enable us to ask better questions and focus ourselves a bit. We also thought that within the examples of questions that these could answer for us, we could spend some time maybe at our retreat, bolding or italicizing the ones that we really want to focus on to keep ourselves focused on the things that we've already said are the things that really matter. Because honestly, MCAS, we could ask five million questions, but we shouldn't. We don't want to be asking five million questions, we want to be asking like four. And so this will help us to really narrow down a little on the things that are really mattering. So I think in terms of process, what we'd like to do is in the summer, continue to build a couple more of these out. And then we want to definitely meet with someone like Ryan Lynch to look at some and make sure specifically that specifically Ryan Lynch or, or his designated, let me put it that way. Or he could designate someone, but to help us make sure that we are correct. So like, you know, obviously we're not going to just any old internet for this, we're going to good places. But obviously, we also want to make sure we're accurate before we disseminate these and start using them. So that was the first artifact. A second artifact we'd like to propose is the creation of data binders for us. That these can be physical or in Google Drive and you all can tell us what your preference is. Carrie's gonna pilot virtual, I'm gonna pilot physical, and the rest of the three of you is up to you, what you want. But rationale behind these will be to keep key data at our fingertips so that we can easily access and reference it throughout the year. This is because right now, when we get presentations and even I was thinking back to the nice lovely one pager, I think it was Mr. Lynch that made this of the district goals, I was like, what month was that? You know, our only way to go back and find these things is to remember what month it was presented in and then within that which meeting and what is it called? And so this will be a place for us to keep these things front and center. Similarly, Bill's goals, we can just have them right there so that we are not then asking Bill things unrelated to the things he's already told us he's focusing on and we have to agree. But those are the things we want to focus on, so it should help to narrow and keep everyone more on track. In addition to goals, we thought we could put some assessment data, this is where the assessment cheat sheets can live. We thought we could put departmental presentations when they come. We thought a high-level budget summary because oftentimes, you know, we get those huge binders, but those are not gonna be coming to all meetings, but it's nice to remember, oh yeah, what are we, you know, just maybe the summary pages at the front. Student, student data, so our enrollment, some of the SPED data. Calendar, district calendar.
School committee meetings.
School committee meetings.
The chance already hasn't been heard.
Yep. And then we thought maybe at the back select policies as we are reviewing them. Just because again, as we're trying to familiarize ourselves with a bit more our policy manual, maybe there's some that we want to keep front and center.
All right. Maybe there's other things that may.
Maybe there's other things, but those.
Dylan and Ryan would recommend and Tom that we.
Yeah, it's just a starter.
They would think that we would.
Yeah, so you all can let us know if you want a physical copy or a virtual, but we'll work on those for next year.
Just have the nice Google Doc.
Yeah, I want mine physical.
I want mine to be easy. Apparently, I'm usually an online person, but for some reason, I feel like I need this to be physical.
I don't really have, I don't have mine now.
Everyone gets what they want.
I like that we get a choice.
We don't have to decide now.
Don't have to decide.
Have time.
I've decided. And the last, the last thing we talked about, do you want to talk about this or are you making that?
Which one are you talking about?
The, the written reflections for, for Bill.
Oh, I just closed access.
So we, so we had also talked about for Bill because we, again, felt like we didn't have enough time to look at what you had given us today. We thought we could do what we've done in the past and it just, a very simple template. We could collect notes from the group on progress thus far and what's still developing from everybody. Everyone kind of a chance to write some down, Carrie and I can compile it and then share it back. And this is in replace of the Desi template?
No, this is just the sort of, since we're in the mid-year and we don't do a formal evaluation, so that he.
Just on the mid-year. And we're, the goal is brevity.
Yeah.
But maybe like to give Bill a little bit better than what we were able to do tonight. Which I feel like even I was like, not making sense. Just to give.
It's progress developing and then we'll have a line for other, if you have other feedback that doesn't fit in those two categories. And then Maria and I will gather it up and then send, send.
Yeah, I haven't made, we haven't made the template yet, so we will make it.
Yeah.
And we will send it to you.
Pretty easy, this.
It's gonna be, yeah, so keep it simple, please. All right.
Three boxes.
Three boxes.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Yeah. That's it. I was thinking, is it helpful if anyone else has the binders?
We don't have binders right now.
Whoever would like a binder, may have a binder.
Anyone else want a binder?
Thinking, you all let us know. But yeah, I just was thinking.
Like a handy binder.
I agree, but I'm just, you know, we want to like the zip goal, like just have them all in one place so that we're not wrestling around and trying to remember what everyone said they're focusing on. It's a lot of information to hold, obviously, you know? Keep us focused.
Sounds good. Quick on the goals.
Fantastic. Okay.
Yep.
Um, all right, so kind of piggybacking off of that. So those were, that was goal one, data. So you.
Check, check, check.
It would appear so. So we can, we'll start working on our 25, 26 goals at our retreat. I think we took a big step forward with our goals this year, but I think we still have a reform improvement.
Yeah.
And I would also think we would then, we can also take a look at our operating protocols. I did attempt, attend the, silly, I don't say attended the recording, but doesn't make any sense. I listened to the recording of the mask chair chat that took place last week and we were talking about operating protocols and sort of the best practice to review those annually or every other year or so. And Peter and I put a decent amount of work into those operating protocols a couple of years ago, maybe three now. So that might be something to put on our review list too. I'm interested to think about our communication goal, maybe in relation to some of the communication work that the district was doing. As we tried to, you know, piggyback on the town update in part because it was one of the only channels at our disposal. You're talking about our pride in our schools goal?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's worked, I think it's worked. I support it, I think we should continue it. I would love to know what everyone else thinks.
Yeah.
But I also wonder if there's other opportunities if we are, as a district, what do you think?
I mean, we kept it pretty light, I would, I would, I would, I mean, we did, we kept it pretty light. Our benchmarks were by December, we identified two mechanisms for developing and sharing points of pride in our schools. We aim to begin sharing out by January and continue monthly through June, and we really kind of tied it into those updates, so. And then we sort of left it pretty open-ended that we would reevaluate this strategy. It was sort of a starting off point to do this, so maybe that is sort of just where we piggyback off of. What's come of that report and work with Bill on what that looks like going forward. And we also had our DEI goal number two here. Again, Bill mentioned the equity audit and the district goals there, using that tool and system to track progress toward that goal outlined through the equity audit and district goals. Again, maybe something that we need to revisit this summer, sort of looking at next steps in the district's approach to DEI and sort of what happens there, what that work looks like.
I think you can also use that as a springboard to think about the SEL bullying stuff.
Yep, that was exactly my thoughts. And lastly, again, Cushing-Hadley School, marching forward with that, knowing, yeah.
I think that the DEI stuff, we, I feel like we've lost track of a little bit. And if you read the research, there are sort of stages that organizations go through to show progress. And I don't know that we're quite at the stage, but there's a heroes and holidays stage. And I think people do like the events that we have and I would like to see us progress. I mean, the final, the banks, thinking of banks is like six stages that you go through.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I just think it'd be nice to think about those kinds of frameworks and sort of like, how are we, what's our goal? Like what is the central office goal around that? And like what is, just sort of like, what does that look like to move from heroes and holidays to, you know?
Something deeper.
Yeah, I mean, I think integration is the final where it's like ceded to everything, that it's not just a sort of extra anymore. So just sort of, I'd love to do some work around what could be a progression in our work. So.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Sounds good to me.
I can't think of the other woman who does that work, it's banks and then there's a woman. I'll think of it.
And then we have some room and opportunity for some new goal setting over the summer as well. Since some of these we can sort of take off of our main list and they'll be sort of secondary, like here too. Sounds good. Um, we have some minutes from June 2nd to vote.
I make a motion with the school committee vote to approve the June 2nd, 2025 minute, twenty, twenty, ugh. It's too tight.
I heard you tonight.
You said it. Twenty twenty-five minutes.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. No warrants for tonight that I saw on the backup, so I think, okay. No correspondences or anything. Uh, any other business, future agenda items that could be covered pretty clearly tonight? All right, nothing else, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn on Thursday.
Second.
All in favor. All in favor?
Hi.